This is a regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Present.
Councilmembers Bagley.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Here.
Samori.
Here.
Santos.
Wit.
Mayor Coombs, we have a call.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at the first public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their names on the list will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening or at the final call, public invited to be heard, on any of the items at the end of the meeting. Next, we have the minutes from the June 26, 2012 meeting. Are there any corrections to these minutes? Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. As I was absent on that meeting, I will not be voting on the minutes for that meeting.
Councilmember Levison.
Mayor, I would move for acceptance of the June 26 minutes as written.
All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes five to zero with Councilmember Wit absent and Councilmember Santos abstaining. Doug, are there any agenda revisions or submissions, documents?
Yes, Mayor Coombs, there was a modified quitclaim deed for item 8I4, which is the Collins annexation. The very last sentence of the document, the last paragraph, had a clause added that says, "But reserving unto grantor all oil and gas and other mineral rights on or under the property," at the very end of the sentence. You should have, I think it was emailed to you, but I just wanted to point out that it was different than what was originally included in your packet.
All right. Is there a report from the city manager?
No, Mayor. Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation designating the month of July 2012 as National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month. Proclamation designating July 2012 as National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month in Longmont, Colorado, whereas every individual and family within a community must understand that mental health is an essential part of overall health, and whereas it is essential to promote well-being for all, regardless of race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, gender identity, language, place of residence, or age, and to ensure equal access, service delivery, and improvement of outcomes, and whereas individuals with mental illness and their families must have the information and the opportunity to exercise choice above their care decisions, creating an integrated plan for treatment, including individual plans of care, improved access to housing, and end to chronic homelessness and increased mental health services, and whereas every individual must have the opportunity for early and appropriate mental health screening, assessment, and referral to treatment, and whereas adults and children with mental health illness must have ready access to best treatments, services leading to recovery, the community must support evidence-based interventions, provide a diverse mental health workforce, and expand knowledge to inform policy. Now, therefore, I, Dennis Al Combs, Mayor, by virtue of the authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim July 2012 as National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month in Longmont, and I invite all citizens in the community to be aware of this vital organization.
Mayor Coombs, I believe Alicia Golds, good soldier, is here to accept the proclamation.
Great. Okay, the first person on the list is Doug Ward. Could you please come down and state your name and address? How's that? Is that part of my three minutes?
Yes.
No.
Right.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Doug Ward, 2337 Brandy Court. On behalf of the Board and the members of Longmont Symphony, we'd like to thank the City of Longmont for again providing us the opportunity to play at the Fourth of July Concert, as Councilman Samori can probably attest, it gets more popular every year with people arriving at 7:30 in the morning to get favorite spots. This year, Radio Colorado Network broadcast the concert to their affiliate stations, as well as on the Internet, where there was 25,000 people worldwide tuned in to the entire concert, and 100,000 people listened to all or part of it. So, a great, great opportunity for the city and for the symphony. I'd also like to mention about Haley Wildheart, who's a young woman, violinist in town, who went around before the concert playing the violin and gathered several hundred dollars for the symphony and the concert. So, we appreciated that. And then that evening, the symphony, as usual, played for Thornton at their fireworks concert, and there was, according to the press, 100,000 to 110,000 people at the fireworks and the concert. And as usual, Dr. Olson shouted out to Longmont the many things that people can experience in Longmont. So, a great opportunity to spread the word. Mostly, I wanted to mention a great gift that the symphony has gotten. You may have heard that an anonymous donor in the City of Longmont has put up $50,000 matching grant for the symphony. We understand it's the intention of the donor to use that money to provide incentives, to expand our patron base and our supporter base and our donors, and so we're working on that. It is also the intent that that money would be used to expand programs that the symphony does throughout the community, so to expand the reach of the symphony. So, I just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge the generosity of the city and the generosity of the donors and generosity of people like Haley who support the symphony and hope that we're serving the community in return for the great gift that we have. Thank you. Thank you, Doug. Kay Fissinger?
I speak tonight as Kay Fissinger. My words are solely my own and do not represent any other person or organization. My address is 2199 Creekside Drive. Some weeks back, a gentleman approached this council at public invited to be heard and minced no words in describing this Longmont City Council as the most unresponsive to its citizens as he had ever witnessed. He couldn't have been more accurate and more honest. And once again, the people of Longmont who have made it clear to you that fracking along is a threat to their health, safety, and welfare, are being jerked around by most of you as you manipulate the process to allow for drill, baby, drill by an industry who couldn't give a rat's ass about the well-being of people, or for that matter, the well-being of this nation. They are multinationals, and their god is money. Anywhere, anyway, anyhow, anytime. After nine months, city staff must be beside itself. This council majority never wanted to go down the oil and gas regulation road in the first place, and did so only to appease and manipulate. Councilmember Finley has her bridges in a twist about the preamble. Her alleged dispute with its contents is as phony as a $3 bill. She won't vote for the regulations under any circumstances. Frankly, she should recuse herself. She works for the Colorado Chamber of Commerce, and in Encana, Vice President sits on its Board of Directors. You'll never convince me, nor a huge number of Longmont citizens, that she is carrying water for anyone but the oil and gas industry. Councilmember Wit is a Romney, Colorado operator. She'll take no position contrary to her candidate's position. So, she'll vote no, no question, and will give a poor imitation of Councilmember Santos, tactics of trying to have it both ways. He speaks about the industry and COGC needing to put up or shut up, but he covers his eyes for the wink-wink which only the industry sees. And what can I say about Member Bagley? He wants top operating to be able to drill, and now he's using his lawyerly skills to override months of work by staff attorneys. To what purpose and who benefits? To the citizens of Longmont who listen and view these council proceedings, there's an 800-pound gorilla in this room sitting next to an elephant of partisan noteworthyness. The oil and gas wizard behind the curtain is on full display.
Jerry Rasmussen, followed by Chris Porzicek.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Rasmussen. I reside at 1842 Stratford Lane here in Longmont. First of all, I firmly believe that a memorandum of understanding with the companies who might want to drill in Longmont is a better way to preserve the integrity of a working relationship than by creating more rules and regulations. Next, I'll comment on the carcinogens, benzene and toluene that occur naturally in crude oil. Benzene is also emitted by our dryer sheets and scented laundry detergents, and it's used in such things as rubber cement, charcoal lighter fluids, and perfume. Toluene is in nail polish and in moisturizing skin creams. People don't circulate petitions to ban paving, but an asphalt highway is nothing more than a controlled oil spill where traffic continually erodes the surface, releasing these same types of carcinogens into the air and ground all the time. And finally, I'd like to address those mysterious chemicals that make up only one-half of 1% of fracking fluid. Guar gum, used as a binder in ice cream, salad dressings, toothpaste, cosmetics, even in aspirin tablets, is used to thicken the water to suspend the sand. Ammonium per sulfate, used in hair bleach and cosmetics, allows a delayed breakdown of that guar gum. Noreatic acid, used to adjust pH in swimming pools, and hydrochloric acid, which occurs naturally as a stomach acid, are used to dissolve minerals and create cracks in the rocks. And citric acid from fruit is used to prevent precipitation of metal oxides. Glutaraldehyde, that we use in water treatment plants, as a preservative in cosmetics and as a disinfectant in medical and dental offices, eliminates bacteria in the wells that produce corrosive byproducts. Polyacrylamide, also used in water treatment plants, and mineral oil found in baby lotions and cosmetics, are used to reduce friction during drilling. N-N-dimethylformamide, used in medicines, acrylic fibers, and plastics, is added to frac fluid to prevent pipe corrosion. Ethylene glycol, in our conditioning shampoos and body cleansers, is used to prevent scale buildup in the pipes. Borate salts, found in our vitamin supplements and laundry detergents and hand cleaners, are used to maintain fluid viscosity. Potassium chloride, a table salt substitute that is also used in medicines and IV fluids, is used as a clay stabilizer. Isopropylol, found in our antiperspirants and hair color, increases the viscosity of the frac fluid, and sodium and potassium carbonates, found in our laundry and dishwasher soaps, maintain the effectiveness of the other fracking ingredients.
Thank you. Chris Porzicek?
Good evening. Chris Porzicek, 12624 Waltham County Route 1. Thank you for pointing out the reason that our cancer rates are going up all across the world, because we continue to use these chemicals, unregulated in most cases brought into us without being tested by the FDA. Thank you. Appreciate the help in making our points. Doesn't make it okay to continue to do and continue to pollute. I'm sorry. Thank you, though, for pointing it out. Some facts. I'm gonna have 80 to 100 wells within two miles of my house. Some other facts. Benzene exposures, 250 yards for children over long term, are eight times likelier to have leukemia. This was a study done in Denver in 2000. I don't want my kid to have that. He's going to be exposed to higher levels of benzene. He's going to be exposed to higher levels of methane. Why? Because there's gonna be 80 to 100 wells if I stay in my house. That's why I need to leave. We've shown neglect. We've shown contamination. We've shown apathy by these people, and they continue to force their way, threaten, push, whatever you wanna call it. What they do is threaten to pull local control, threaten to sue, threaten to cut off our revenues. That's what they do. Threaten us with money and jobs. I'm talking about my child's livelihood, his health. So, I don't really care.
Good evening. Chris Porzicek, one-two-six-two-four, Weld County, Route One. Uh, thank you for pointing out the reason that our cancer rates are going up all across the world because we continue to use these chemicals, unregulated in most cases, brought into us without being tested by the FDA. Thank you. Appreciate the help in making our points. Doesn't make it okay to continue to do and continue to pollute. I'm sorry. Thank you, though, for pointing it out. Some facts. I'm gonna have eighty to a hundred wells within two miles of my house. Some other facts. Um, benzene exposures, two-hundred-and-fifty yards for children over long term are eight times likely to, likelier to have leukemia. This was a study done in Denver in two thousand. I don't want my kid to have that. He's going to be exposed to higher levels of benzene. He's going to be exposed to higher levels of methane. Why? Because there's gonna be eighty to a hundred wells if I stay in my house. That's why I need to leave. We've shown neglect. We've shown contamination. We've shown apathy by these people, and they continue to force their way, threaten, push, whatever you wanna call it. What they do is threaten to pull local control, threaten to sue, threaten to cut off our revenues. That's what they do. Threaten us with money and jobs. I'm talking about my child's livelihood, his health. So I don't really care about your money and your revenue when you're talking about my child being exposed to leukemia eight times more likely than somebody else because you wanna put eighty to a hundred wells in a residential or nearby a residential area and school. I'm sorry. I'm not buying it, folks. These guys are bullies. Uh, I'm concerned for my kids. That's all there is. We've had six people walk away from our house because of the well, because of the fracking that's gonna go on nearby. Whether it's three-hundred-and-fifty feet or you guys negotiate seven-hundred-and-fifty feet, whatever. I've had six people walk away because they're worried, not just for property values, but they also have children that they don't want to potentially expose to this stuff or aren't sure. Because really, the verdict isn't out. It's not. We need to start studying this. Over the last ten years, Weld County has doubled the amount of wells. With that being said, that means we're double exposure. And in the next ten, how much more? Are we doubling it again? So I, I'm just not gonna take the chance. I'm selling my house. I'm out. You not gonna convince me otherwise? You guys selling your oil and gas? I use it. You're right. I'm kinda forced to, though. That's the infrastructure that's set up. If I had my way, believe me, I wouldn't. The burden of proof should not be on my family to wait till my child gets leukemia from living two-hundred-and-fifty yards away. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, Tim Rempel, followed by Stephen Miller?
Good evening, Mayor and distinguished council. Uh, Tim Rempel, twenty-nine fifty-four Spinnaker Place here in Longmont. Um, wanted to start off maybe on a slightly different note. Uh, this past Saturday, I had the great fortune to be out on Lake McIntosh windsurfing during the middle of the day. The factors came together. There's still enough water left. It's going down, but there's still enough. The wind and me having a day off. It was resplendent. It was wonderful. I don't wanna see that facility, that this city and those of us who have lived in the northwest corner of Longmont near Lake McIntosh for twenty-something years nowadays, I don't wanna see that facility ruined by a bunch of wells to the west of there that make it impossible to go out and windsurfing on that and all the rest of the stuff that goes on in that lake. It's amazing how that facility has emerged, thanks maybe to some of you who currently sit on, on council and if not, your predecessors. Out on the Our Longmont website, there's a lovely picture of some kids playing soccer. My kid plays soccer. This is from the Wells heads near Trail Ridge Middle School. I live on the west side of town near Westview. I don't wanna see that happen by Westview. I don't wanna see that just literally out back of the property of Westview Middle School and my kid, who's gonna be there in his eighth grade year this fall, be subjected to whatever goes on there or anybody's kids later in time. You know, that's not what this, what we need to be doing in Longmont. I would, I would love to add, I wanna advocate that the city council move forward with the regulations. It's a very dynamic situation. There's lots of things changing. Uh, Bill McKibben's three-fifty.org is trying to get up no less than two ballot initiatives in this state. One of them having to do with fracking and the other having to do with use of water in fracking. Be interesting to see what they can get them on the ballot. Be interesting to see what happens if they do. This whole situation is dynamic, but I would strongly encourage council to please move forward with the regulations that the city staff spent so much of our tax dollars working on. If not now, when? Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Miller, followed by Michael Belmont?
Good evening. Um, I'm Dr. Stephen Miller. I live at one-oh-five-nine-four North Sixty-Fifth Street, and I wanted to comment on fracking as well. And I went to a conference recently that discussed fracking, and, uh, I'm concerned that fracking is going forward faster than the regulations are going forward to, to, to control what fracking is doing. And I, I urge everyone to slow down and, and, and take in all the information about what fracking does or might do, uh, and not rush into just allowing it to happen. I'm really concerned about water use, and one of the things that the convention talked about, the, uh, lack of water in the world and in the United States, and in not so many years, they predict that Los Angeles, Las Vegas, and Phoenix will be dry. They'll have no water. And Las Vegas is now trying to get a pipeline up to water. And fracking takes trillions of gallons of our drinking water and puts it down under the ground. And we're gonna have a water shortage, and I think we have to preemptively think about what we're doing and think about this water. Another thing is, uh, most of our water can, can be recycled. We can flush water down the toilet. We can recycle and reuse it. The water that's used for fracking that comes back up, uh, cannot be recycled. They can't reclaim it. And I think that, that we have to consider that. Uh, and what are we gonna do with that water? Are we gonna just have it in, in a pool above ground and wait for it to seep into our groundwater? Is it gonna leak into our streams? I mean, what are we gonna do with all this stuff if, if we allow it to happen? I'm, I'm concerned about this wastewater. And, and I also agree with, uh, some of the previous speakers. I think if it were going to happen, it shouldn't be near schools or reservoirs, uh, or near the, uh, uh, or, or in the city. There's plenty of places to drill without drilling in our city. I'd, I'd like to protect our water, and I'd like to protect our air. Thank you.
Michael Belmont?
Michael Belmont, eight forty-one Tenacity Drive in Longmont. I do, in fact, represent a group. You might even call it the heart of Longmont. It is thousands of citizens with one voice, but many thousands of signatures have signed this petition, which would place on the ballot this November, the right, the opportunity for Longmont registered voters to vote whether to prohibit hydraulic fracturing or fracking in the city of Longmont. I am speaking, of course, of the group Our Health, Our Future, Our Longmont. Now, you know, as a council, that modern fracking, unconventional fracking, directional drilling, call it what you will, is relatively new, ten years-ish, and that it is an industrial operation that is presently not only allowed next to our homes, in our schools, and in our open spaces, it is in fact imposed upon us. And we also know that there are many potential hazards associated with this new unconventional drilling, including potential water contamination, groundwater, drinking water, tens of thousands of heavy diesel truckloads laden with chemicals, water, all kinds of things damaging our roads, potential loss of property values, which, thank you, Chris Porzicek, eloquently articulated a moment ago, ongoing fugitive air emissions from completed wells that continuously release unknown amounts of carcin- of, including known carcinogens. So why are these folks, why are these thousands of citizens signing this petition? Because they do not want themselves, their children, their loved ones, to be a grand experiment by an industrial operation that in fact our very government, which is charged to protect our health and safety, has not established or shown that this is a safe operation in the proximity of densely populated areas like Longmont. So why did these folks, these thousands, sign this signature and continue to do so? Because they believe in our constitutional right to health, safety, and well-being. If our government cannot and will not provide that, much like the FDA does, protecting us against, uh, chemicals that we take into our bodies, then the citizens must do so. You may go, and I encourage all of you city council members and you in the audience, please go to OurLongmont.org, which is the org, the grassroots organization. You can read the petition. You can find out where you may sign the petition. It is time to let the people vote on fracking. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, Strider Binstone?
Good evening, uh, Mayor Coombs, uh, City Council. I'm Strider Binstone, nine fifty-one West Seventeenth Avenue. They say that freedom is a constant struggle. Oh, Lord, we've struggled so long. We must be free. We must be free. I just came from seeing my friend and colleague John Lewis on Democracy Now. You can see it yourself, democracynow.org. Um, we both got our heads cracked open on the Edmund Pettus Bridge in Selma, Alabama, to win the right to vote. Right now, voter suppression laws are taking over in many states to disenfranchise millions of young, old, minority, working, and poor people to prevent them from participating in what we call a democracy, just like the poll tax and the Jim Crow laws a hundred years ago. Reminded me of being in court. Forty-eight years ago, the first time I ever walked into a courtroom, I was convicted for sitting on the white folks' side of the courtroom. Fined fifty dollars, sent to jail. The sheriff came in and passed out weapons to the Ku Klux Klan prisoners to beat me. My most recent time was today in Longmont. Again, I was fined fifty dollars and court costs for the crime of taking care of my sixteen-year-old blind doggy, who I took out, who has diabetes for three years, and I took her out for a ten-foot walk from my house trailer this close to my leg, seven o'clock Sunday morning back in March, and I was convicted for that crime today. She died last week. I planted her five feet deep. I don't think anybody's gonna bother her. The corruption of our entire society and all democratic process by extreme wealth disparity, the accumulation of great quantities of money and putting that into the political system to corrupt it is and will destroy our society unless we see otherwise. I'm reminded several weeks ago, we had Bicycle Longmont. At least two thousand people of all ages, diverse classes, little kids, six, seven years old, eighty-year-old men and women on their bicycles, had a wonderful tour around town and a party. We could be creating commu- community instead of creating wars. Thank you.
Thank you, Strider. Um, Joe Bassman, followed by Shelley Bassman?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. I'm Joe Bassman, thirty-four fourteen Lakeview Circle, where I own the service rights. I'd like to provide a few statements that could be used as the context for Longmont's oil and gas regulations. Now, these following statements are not contentious. These statements are either citations of existing law, or they have been openly stated by the Colorado Oil and Gas Commis- Commission or oil and gas representatives at the stakeholders' meetings. Number one, whereas, the Colorado Oil and Gas Act requires oil and gas resources to be enacted and extracted in a manner consistent with the protection of public health, safety, and welfare, including protection of the environment and wildlife resources. Whereas, there are no studies that have proven that our air quality or our health are safe from the emissions spewed out by operational oil and gas wells. Whereas, almost all modern Niobrara oil and gas wells use hydrological fracking and directional drilling and constitute a recurring industrial activity. The setback requirement of three-hundred-and-fifty feet was established solely to provide for fire, explosion, safety, and response. Three-hundred-and-fifty-foot setbacks ignore considerations of public health and industrial impact. Keep in mind, these statements have been made by members of the COGCC and/or members of the oil and gas community. I have taped recordings to back me up. There are, continuing, number five, there are advantages to being further than three-hundred-and-fifty feet away from wells. Six, up to fifty-two wells are currently allowed on a single consolidated pad. All of the above statements about the impacts of oil and gas wells are multiplied when wells are concentrated. Concentrated wells impact fewer people, but the impact on the few is much more severe. There has not been any reevaluation of fire and sa- and explosion safety from multiple consolidated well pads. Fugitive benzene and toxic emissions from wells are incrementally more severe for each well that is co-located on a consolidated pad. Consolidated pads are designed for high-volume, sequential, industrial drilling, and hydrological fracking operations that will endure and repeat over long periods of time. Currently, there is a petition being circulated in Longmont that would give citizens the opportunity to vote in November to add Article sixteen to our municipal charter. Article sixteen is the Longmont Public Health, Safety, and Wellness Act. If passed, Article sixteen will prohibit the use of hydrological fracking and the storage and disposal of waste products within the city of Longmont. I urge members of city council and all Longmont residents concerned about our city to sign this petition. You may find, finding signing locations by visiting OurLongmont.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, Shelley Bassman?
Good evening, Mayor, council. Shelley Bassman, thirty-four fourteen Lakeview Circle. I read in the paper that, um, the tabling of the ord- of the oil and gas regulations might, will be discussed tonight, and I read the, um, proposed shortened version of the preamble. I first want to say, or the record, that the NOAA study of the air quality in Erie has never been discredited. That's in parentheses. Somebody said brevity is the wit, soul of wit, and my dad was a, an attorney, and he once shared the story where a judge said, uh, "Mr. White, your brief, being brief, has been read." I cannot say the same for the other attorneys to the, um, litigation. So I support re- briefing up, making more brief the preamble, but I have some comments on the words. Page one, line six and seven, I hope you'll take note, says, "Whereas domestic oil and gas exploration have increased in proximity to residential areas in and about Longmont, Colorado." I question, what is the meaning of the word domestic in that sentence? It ought to be industrial. Old-fashioned oil and gas wells were not industrial. The new ones with directional drilling and hydro-fracking are industrial activities. David Neslin, former director of the COGCC, stated this in so many words, and it has not been, I have not heard Tom Kerr, um, invalidate it multiple times, David says. This is an industrial surface use. It is no longer exploration. It is extraction or mining. It lies underneath every inch of ground in Longmont, so it is not exploration. They no longer find dry wells. Then lines eight to eleven on page one says, "Whereas the city of Longmont desires to protect its municipality," uh, may I suggest that that should be, has the legal obligation and the legal authority to protect. We don't just desire to protect it. We have the obligation. This city council and the government has the obligation to do it. Um, and then it says that the activities might negatively impact residential and commercial property values, well-being, and health. Um, might is a little, might doesn't belong in there. On page five, lines two to five, "The proposed amendments to the city's twelve-year-old regulations are intended to allow and encourage responsible oil..." To my knowledge, um, the industry does not need encouragement at this point. They need regulation. So, um, I encourage the adoption of these regulations with the changes to the, um, preamble, and I too have signed the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. That ends our first call, public invited to be heard.
Mayor Coombs, the, uh, first item on second reading in public hearings is a presentation and public hearing on recommended budget categories for the two thousand thirteen CDVG home and affordable housing fund programs, and Kathy Fedler will make a presentation on that.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Kathy Fedler, CDVG coordinator.
Kathy Fedler, CDBG coordinator. Tonight, I'm here to present to you the recommended budget categories for the 2013 CDBG Home and Affordable Housing Fund program. These budget recommendations were reviewed and approved by the Longmont Housing and Human Services Advisory Board on June 14 and are being recommended just as they had proposed it. We are planning for a 20% reduction to both our CDBG and home grants. While Congress has not yet approved or appropriated the 2013 budget, this should be a worst-case scenario, and actually, things are looking pretty good about, close to full funding. So there may be actual, more funding available when we actually get to the funding recommendations this fall and bring those back to you. The proposed budget for the CDBG program does provide for funding to be made available for the Neighborhood Revitalization Program, Economic Development Program, to provide competitive funds for nonprofits to make capital improvements, and to continue to support ongoing housing rehabilitation programs. The home budget, as proposed, sets aside about $95,000 for competitive housing funds, and then also continuing to support homeownership programs, which is our Down Payment Assistance Program, and tenant-based rental assistance, which is the Rent Assistance Program. And then finally, the Affordable Housing Fund budget sets aside funds, all of the funds except for what's being proposed for administration for competitive housing applications. I think that's probably all the comments that I have at this point in time. I did provide to you a summary of where we stand with our timeliness expenditure. As you know, we have to, we cannot have more than 1.5 times our current grant in our letter of credit, 60 days or 90 days before the start of our fiscal year. And so we are on schedule to meet that timeliness requirement unless something falls through that we're planning on. I guess the only other point I would like to make is that for the Affordable Housing Fund, we are recommending that only what we're getting as revolving payments, the loan payments, the program income that we're getting, be put out for potential competitive housing applications, not touching the principal that is in that fund at this point in time, which is around $800,000 to $900,000, since we do not have a dedicated funding source to go into that fund. And we also have set aside the full amounts for administration that were allowed under CDBG and home, and this is because it will cover staff costs, environmental reviews, project plans, and reports that are required, updates to our database system, et cetera. And as in the past, what we do is if we don't use all of those funds for those administrative costs, we do put them back into the pot to reprogram for the following fiscal year. This is a public hearing, needs to be held tonight to get comments from citizens, if there are any. And then if Council approves this budget, or whatever budget you approve, if you want to make some changes to it, we would be putting applications out sometime around next week. Applications due back in August, first part of August. The Technical Review Group, Affordable Housing Technical Review Group, and the Housing Advisory Board would review those applications and make funding recommendations back to you, probably at your first regular meeting in October. So I'll answer any questions, or you can go to the public hearing.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just have a question. What is competitive housing funds? What are those used for?
So, Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Finley, what those are used for, so we put those out to the community. There's a public notice that goes in the paper, and any nonprofit or for-profit developer that is going to provide affordable housing and has a project can apply for those fund funding. So in the past, we funded Habitat for Humanity, the Longmont Housing Development Corporation, or Housing Authority, Thistle, to make improvements to their rental properties, and those types of projects, so.
Councilmember Levison?
Yes. Kathy, I have a couple of questions around the chart on, under the Neighborhood Revitalization. You have asterisks that notes that there are $77,850 set aside for potential land acquisition to support midtown revitalization. What are we talking about for that project?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levison, so that's really for potential land acquisition or other land improvements that the new neighborhoods of Spangler and Lanyon may identify. So for instance, if you remember in Kensington, we did some park improvements. We actually are doing park improvements in Athletic Field Park, which will start probably next week. But that's just kind of a wag in case there is anything that those neighborhoods come up with. At this point in time, they haven't completed their revitalization plans, so it's possible that that won't be needed specifically for that kind of activity, but it's there in case. And there also may be some of those funds potentially used for the Kensington Park acquisition that the city has been looking at, that little bit of land on the north, just south of Ninth.
And then, so I guess the other thing I just need a little clarity around, are we looking at projects that might be on the unfunded list of the CIP as far as the aging parks and playground equipment replacement schedule to look at using the potential of CDBG money to do those improvements in the CDBG-qualified communities?
So Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levison, we don't specifically look at that. If the neighborhood identifies something that is also on there, we can take a look at it. What we usually do is then partner with Parks Department or LPC. So for instance, in Lanyon, additional street lighting has been identified as that neighborhood, so we've gotten with LPC, they're covering part of it, CDBG funds are covering part of it. So we would do a similar thing if the neighborhoods identify any of those unfunded projects as something that would be a priority to them.
That assumes that they would know what the CIP looks like.
Well, it, we, so they would identify what they think their needs are, then we could go and look at what might or might not be prepared to be funded by the city.
So could you look at things, I know that there's been a really great need on Ninth Avenue for missing sidewalks. There's a lot of, there are a lot of kids that are walking in the street on the south side of Ninth Avenue. Could some of the CDBG money go for land acquisition so that we can get a sidewalk in?
So that was part of what I was talking about, as a potential project. If midtown starts on the other side of Ninth, though, so it would have to be something that we would probably come back to y'all with, or at least we would have to be approved through John's office as something that, to spend Neighborhood Revitalization funds on, because these funds are designated mostly for midtown.
And so are some of the CDBG monies that are the matching for the state historical survey for the Alta Park and Old North Longmont, are those identified in this pot of money?
No, they're already identified and set aside in previous funding.
So for like 2011?
Yeah, or 2010, whichever.
Twenty, okay, okay. And then one of the things that I would really like to see is, and I don't know if we ever present this to the Housing and Human Services Board, some of the work that CDBG has done in the way of economic development and job creation, and I don't know if we present any of that information to the board to let them know of some other programming we do.
Yes, they're well aware.
Okay. So if we have money, if we get the full allotment from the federal government for CDBG, I would really like to see some emphasis, and if it, you know, puts the economic development target we set of 30% of CDBG money higher to 35%, I mean, I would really like to see us be very aggressive with using CDBG money for doing job creation and helping people gain, you know, work skills and any kind of training programs that we can support with CDBG money, to get people to work and to do some job creation in the community. I'm very, very interested in that.
So that would be something definitely that we could take a look at and that they could take a look at and recommend. We also have to be very conscious of that timeliness standard, and the two programs that are impacting that is economic development set aside funding and Neighborhood Revitalization set aside funding. So we are trying to beef those up and get those programs out and going, and we've actually made some changes to the small business loan program to make it more attractive, but we also have to consider that, too, so we can't have funds setting too long.
Yeah, I understand, and I know that the loan program goes and fits and starts because you do a lot of marketing of the program, and it takes business owners a while to figure out what their projects are and whether or not they'd rather do that loan program than a private loan program. And I just would like to see, you know, leveraging that money, because certainly, if we can do that kind of job creation in our community and help people in that target income area, you know, I think it just helps our local economy much, much more. And so that would be, you know, my thoughts on what you've presented with this, too. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Kathy, I'm fine with the proposed budget for this year, but I'd like to see what else can be done as far as infrastructure with CDBG money. I think Councilmember Levison makes a very good point, you know, steering CDBG money towards job creations also, I believe, is necessary. We need to be a little bit more aggressive. I know that things are tight, as we all know in Washington, you know, budget hasn't been passed in a while, lots of continuing resolutions. However, if we could find different mechanisms for CDBG to be used, and Harold and I had a discussion about other potential options, I'd like to see more options for how CDBG money can be used as far as perhaps infrastructure in midtown or other neighborhoods that would qualify. I think not only if there, if some neighborhoods have been waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting, this might be a funding source to make some of those overused or neglected pieces of infrastructure to be solved. So, you know, I'm fine with the budget this year, but I think next year, we could probably look at other options as well. So, thanks.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. This is a question for you, Kathy, and also for you, Mr. Dominguez. Harold, you've mentioned that you've got some concern about the budget, the general budget having expenses that are not covered by recurring revenues, just one-time hits. Are there any concerns in this budget along those lines? Meaning, are there expenditures in here that we're planning on spending into the future that we do not have the funds to actually provide those expenditures?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Bagley, no, all these funds are, the grant funds are totally separate from the general fund. They are ongoing as long as we continue to receive the funds. The only thing that is part of the general fund is the $152,000 for admin support, and that is ongoing already, so it was already included, so it is not being funded with one time.
Thank you. I know that the housing and whatnot tends to be a volatile issue, and I just wanted to make sure that we had our bases covered.
Okay. See any further questions? I will open it up for public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? No one has signed up. I guess, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve recommendations of the Housing and Human Services Advisory Board.
Councilmember Levison?
Thank you. One last comment on this. Before we keep moving on to additional neighborhoods, I'd like to have some kind of assessment done with all the neighborhoods we've done revitalization projects with, because, you know, we've got five, as I'm counting on the book, Kensington, Historic East Side, North Longmont, and then the sub-neighneighborhoods of Lanyon and Spangler. I'd like to have some kind of overall view of all the different plans that have come out of the neighborhoods and where we are targeting on completing the projects that were identified. I know that, you know, Collier Park just got the new playground equipment this summer, and that was on the revitalization plan way back when, and that maybe is 10 years. So, and what made me think of it was Councilmember Bagley's comment, whether or not we do have enough continuing funds to complete projects, because the worst thing you can do, in my opinion, is get neighborhoods to come together and identify things, and then there's not enough of a continuum to keep the ball rolling and keep people engaged if there's, you know, if it's really going to be a 10-year approach that we're taking. People like to see quick changes, and that may not be possible with the finite amount of money we get from CDBG and all the great need there is in the community.
Just to address that, we are in the process of updating the midtown revitalization plan to account for all that and figure out where we're at and where we're going with that one. To go back and do Kensington and Historic East Side, I will check with John and see where we stand with that, but I'm with you. We have been making ongoing improvements to that and continuing to implement those as we're able to, so.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. It passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Witt absent.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is a public hearing on ordinance 2012-38, making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1 of 2012. There is no formal staff presentation planned, but Teresa Malloy is here to answer questions if you have any.
Okay, I will open this up for a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any additional discussion? Councilmember Levison?
Yes, Mayor. I would like to move ordinance, and I'm making, trying to make sure I'm getting the first one here, it's ordinance 0-2012-37.
38.
You know, I did this the last time, too. So are we not on, what item are we on?
B.
Yeah, that's what I, just on the wrong page, I guess. Okay.
All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Witt absent.
Your next item is a public hearing on ordinance 2012-39, a bill for an ordinance amending the 2012-2016 capital improvement program. Again, no staff presentation, and Teresa Malloy is here to answer questions.
Are there any questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I had an interesting experience two weekends ago. I had the opportunity to go out to Union Reservoir and actually camp. Yeah, it was actually, it was fun, but my concern is we're talking about shifting money around and whatnot for the Union Reservoir Office and shop replacement. The scout circle, I know that when we, I didn't realize that we're talking about revitalizing Union Reservoir, the master plan we approved does nothing for the scout circle and the campsites that are not near the reservoir. And so, I mean, knowing now what, I wish I knew then what I know now, and that would have been, let's make sure we don't forget those campsites, too. So my question is, does the master plan, am I not remembering it right? Does the master plan account for the scout circle and those, do you know what I'm talking about when I say scout circle? Hey, Kim.
Hi, good evening. Kim Sugar, Natural Resource Manager. The master plan actually does a whole new layout for around Union Reservoir. So the camping will actually move to the east side, and on the west side, the camping won't be there anymore. It'll be the sailing club, boat marina, and there is a big scout circle area.
But, and so will the scout circle in that camping area stay there?
No, not in the current location. Camping won't stay in the current location either.
All right, then I'm good, because there was no, there was no water near the campsite. I was like, I'm, I just was in boats. So if that's going to change, I feel a lot better about the Union Reservoir. Mayor Protam Santos?
I have a quick question. I guess the original budget for PR 161 was $150,000, and now we've received a final cost estimate at $240,000. So, basically, what's changed between the original estimate and that we would be off by $90,000, basically?
Some of it is just what the initial estimate, we hadn't gone out to bid, so some of it was, I guess, you know, WAG, but then some of it also include everything from utility hookups and all the pieces that we would need, which weren't in the original estimate, which is the building.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? Yeah, so I'll open this up for a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Levison.
Unless Councilmember Bagley wants to make the motion. Mayor, I'd like to move ordinance 2012-39 for adoption.
Second.
Thank you, sir.
All right, let's vote. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Witt absent.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for ordinance 2012-40, which is a bill for an ordinance amending section 1502-040P and repealing and reenacting chapter 1509 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Enforcement and Penalties. Don Burchett is here to provide an update, and I believe he's also going to talk about the next two items as well.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, Don Burchett with the Development Services Division. And as Valerie just stated, tonight, the next three items, items D, E, and F, are all updates to the municipal code. And so, in order to save everybody having to listen to me drone on and on, I'm going to kind of cover them all in one quick presentation, and then you can go through each of these items individually for a public hearing. The, and just as an overview really quick, the items that you're seeing tonight are, again, in a continuing improvement process that the Economic Development Department has been entering into to try to improve our development review process. Part of this, one of the items on your agenda tonight includes changes that were presented to the city council at the retreat this year about changes to the development review and acceptance process and the public improvement agreement process. The first item you're going to look at tonight is item 8D, which is ordinance 02012-40, and that amends chapters 15.02 and 15.09 regarding the violation section of the Land Development Code and the Municipal Code. What we're looking at here is that we're first making changes based on position changes in, within the organization that happened a few years ago that we're finally getting to, to make those represent the right person so that they're responsible for it versus the old titles that people have. And then the second item that we're doing is to removing some redundancies and some issues that were almost a cyclical problem that we had in the chapter that regarding violations that basically didn't let us get out of a continuing loop that it created in the violation section, which required notice and then an appealability and a notice and then appealability. The next item is item 8E, which amends four sections of the municipal code regarding the minor subdivision process in the City of Longmont. This, again, deals with different types of development applications that all fall within minor subdivisions. The important thing here to note is that it increases staff's ability to approve some of these minor developments, it gives us some more flexibility when we approve these, which will and should allow us to actually reduce the amount of time the applicants are in our process and potentially even save them some money. In item 8F, we are looking at then the items that were directed at the retreat regarding the public improvement agreement changes and the final acceptance changes and how those are done, to changing those to staff level versus having to come to the city council for approval. Again, this goes along with the topic in the retreat of the cutting red tape, trying to reduce the amount of time. And again, we estimate anywhere from four to six weeks of time in the development process that this will save by not having to come to council for these two items. And with that, I'll end my presentation of these three, but I'm available for any questions now or after the public hearing.
Thank you, Don. Councilmember Santos.
Hey, Don. Oh, thank you, Mayor. I have questions on E, on page 95. It's something that Don and I have talked about a couple of times. Lines 16 and 17. Number D, to review all annexations, subdivisions, and replats. Do we actually bring back subdivisions and replats that have water deficiencies back to council? Can't the DRC do that themselves?
Mayor Coombs and Mayor Protam Santos, no, we do not bring these to council. These are reviewed by city staff and the Water Board, and then they are presented to the DRC for our decision-making. So, currently, this appears to be a remnant from past when all items used to be brought up to city council for ultimate approval, and it is also would be a remnant if you approve the changes to the public improvement agreement, because once the public improvement agreements are reviewed by staff as well, there would be no need for you to review those items.
So, but Water Board still looks at this even though there's a water deficient?
They look at it as long, whether there's a water deficiency or not, and if it was after 1964, I believe is the date, they look at all replats and all subdivisions.
Is that kind of a redundancy?
I believe it is in that if the water deficit's already been satisfied, I don't know that they really need to review it, because they review it to make sure the water deficit's been satisfied.
Why don't we just remove that part? I mean, why does, how much time does that add, you know, having going back to Water Board?
Water Board, I believe, meets once a month.
Once a month.
And so, in order to make that typically, we're two to three weeks before the agenda's released, so depending on when an application is required to go, that could add two to three weeks. It could add, if we miss a meeting, it could add another month.
So, I would, well, so if we wanted to correct this and not have it go back to Water Board, I mean, if a water requirement has already been met.
Okay.
Okay. For redevelopment.
Okay.
Why does it need to go back to Water Board? I don't understand that, so.
Unless Dale has something to add, I, if the water requirement has been met, which Water Resources staff keeps track of.
Right.
Then I don't know why it would go back to the Water Board.
But it is currently.
But it is currently.
Dale's coming down. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, to streamline it and get rid of some redundancy.
Mayor Coombs and members of council, Dale Radermaker, Director of Public Works and Natural Resources, if I understand the question, it's why are we going back to council if the deficit's already met and there's no water owed? The only instance that I would think, or an instance that you'd want to do that in is, there is a section in the raw water policy that says that if the use, that the redevelopment or that the new use is coming in is greater than three acre feet per acre, then additional water is needed. And so, there could be circumstances, if you can imagine, say, if we're lucky enough to get a brewery or something to come into a redeveloped area that has a fairly intensive water use, you'd certainly want that to go back to the Water Board in order to confirm that, in fact, there is sufficient water being provided by that development such that it's not being put on the backs of the citizens. So, you know, if the idea is to streamline so that we're not going back with every routine one, I would think staff could be able to make that call based on the application that's coming to them. So, if the application is such that it's not extraordinary water use, we could probably accomplish it. I think the other thing we've got to make sure we're aligned with is the Water Board charge, which is to look at all subdivisions and developments to make, because if we need to, we need to make potentially a change in the charge of the Water Board as well.
My only concern is that if the same water, yeah.
I get that, right. That makes sense to me, too. Why, on its face, why would you go back? So, that's the one reason I could think of, and frankly, that's fairly rare, so.
So, if we were to change this, I mean, would we, could we just strike? It's page 95.
Yeah.
There's also.
It's in that section D, line 16.
Right. Section D.
Under 2.0403.
Page 95.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's a part of it also, and the review process on page 96, line 6, the Water Board will make recommendations to city council to make final determination. Why can't the Development Review Committee do that?
You know, there is, as I'm thinking about this sort of on the fly here.
Sure.
I do know over the years, we've also had properties that were previously brought into the city outside of the typical annexation process wherein they still have historic water rights attached to that property, which is another reason you'd want to make sure that that gets in front of an advisory board or a board to act on. But, you know, if the idea is that we only take them back to the extent that there's either potential deficits or some other non-standard water issue associated with that particular redevelopment, then it wouldn't need to go. I'm not good at writing, that's why we got an attorney, though, so.
Sure. So, I mean, to accomplish what I'm suggesting, what would we need to do in this ordinance to change it? I mean, I could be creative, but I'd rather be right.
Let me take a stab at her. I'm looking over at Eugene here. So, I would say to review all annexations, subdivisions, and replats, which have an existing water deficit or other water, raw water-related issue, and recommend to the DRC as to the adequacy of the water rights to be transferred.
And that will accomplish that?
Looking at my team here.
I mean, you know, well, you know, I know Councilmember Levison's next in queue, so I'll give you a minute, because I think that's the change that I'm looking for, to streamline it. Because there's no, I can't find a reason to have it, if there's, if a replat or subdivision has met the requirement, as long as they're not going over, because, you know, I still believe that, you know, you want in, you bring issue water.
Right, right.
You know, Longmont has a great water portfolio, and there's a reason for that. But if the deficits.
Actually, not to interrupt you, but as I read that now, it says to review all annexations. I think every annexation needs to go.
And I have no problem with that. I have no problem with that. The issue I'm having is with the subdivisions and replats.
So, as long as we say to review all annexations, comma, subdivisions and replats, which have an outstanding water deficit or other outstanding raw water issue, and to recommend, boy, we're doing several things in here. We got annexations, because those annexations are going to come to city council.
That I understand.
To the city council and the DRC as to the adequacy of the water rights to be transferred. I don't think you can just strike out the council because of the annexation in that sentence.
No.
Okay. That's getting a little.
Don, you might want to queue on that for a few minutes, so, because I think I'll be coming back with what your suggestion is.
Councilmember Levison.
Yes, Dale, could you stay at the podium for a minute, please? And, you know, I understand the point Councilmember Santos is making, you know, however, through the application, pre-application, and DRC process, we would catch any of this way, way early. So, it wouldn't be, I mean, they're going to be going to planning and zoning, they're going to be going to a host of committees, especially if, you know, a concept plan might need some kind of review from, you know, the Master Board of Appeals or Board of Variance or whatever. So, this is not, in my view, this is not necessarily like the one single item or committee that's going to hold something up two or three weeks. The other thing I'm thinking of is a circumstance where we're looking at tonight where we're going to potentially annex something in as an estate-type property, where previously in the 90s, the original proposal for annexation was 13 homes. Well, you know, in the, in the future, perhaps that annexation that's now an estate level might want to be subdivided or replatted. And so, in that circumstance, this becomes an important issue to make sure there's an adequacy of water rights to provide for a real change in use. So, it could be that a replat could have a much different look from an estate lot to maybe multifamily housing or something else in the future. And so, that's why I think that this is still maybe an important subsection to maintain for a unique situation that, you know, I think what Councilmember Santos is looking at is something that's pretty standard. I think what this addresses is something that is more out of the ordinary and unique, that somebody would be coming in with a deficit of water rights, and certainly that would want to be addressed.
Just real quickly, Councilmember Levison, you know, I don't know on the, sort of, the critical path of the development coming through from pre-application to approval, whether this action does or doesn't add time, given the other processes. Don can probably respond to that better, but I do think if we can streamline it, we should try to do that so long as we don't have things fall through the cracks. And that's why I was trying to craft language that would still get those in front of people if there is any issue.
Well, and my concern is that doing it tonight, as you stated, we'd want to go back and look at what Water Board policy is, and if we're going to do something tonight that goes against what some other city policy holds, maybe the best course of action might be to put this over. I mean, there's no rush on this necessarily tonight. I mean, could we put this over to another date and have, you know, all the language and everything done?
Mayor Coombs and members of council, the changes that Dale proposed, I think, would still allow for the properties to come through the normal process that they do with annexations and things to make sure that our raw water policy's being met and that they're being reviewed. The change that this would do, though, is that it would really affect whether or not every plat has to go to the Water Board or if it's only the ones that have deficits. And so, that's what the wording that was just discussed would allow us to do. The change that's in 2.40, 0.030 is the powers and duties of the Water Board, so this is the specific section that calls out their powers and duties. As to the example used of water deficits and if they were going to do one house or they're going to do 15, the requirement is still going to stay the same, it's still three acre feet per acre, no matter what the use is, whether it's for one house or 15, it's still the same, water deficit is still, and requirement is the same. So, from that standpoint, that really wouldn't be affected by this change. So, you know, and again, I know that this has happened where we have had applicants coming through a replat process, and then we can't approve the subdivision until they go to Water Board. And so, it has caused people to extend the length of time before we could record a plat. So, does it happen all the time? No. But it does happen, and it does push people back until they get to that meeting before we can have our people sign it at staff level.
Mayor, council, I think one of the issues that we're getting into with this section is that it's really trying to deal with two issues. It's trying to deal with annexation and then subdivision and replats at the same time, which is making it exceptionally confusing. It would be my recommendation that council act on the item that we have before, but also provide direction to staff to address this issue in terms of what they would like to see, and then let us actually separate that paragraph into two separate components, and then also, at the same time, make sure that we're going across all the ordinances that we have in place to make those changes, because I think one of the things that Don mentioned early in the presentation is that they're making adjustments in this ordinance that actually resulted from some changes that occurred a few years ago. And so, I think it's important in this that we go through and make sure that we're hitting every. hitting every piece of legislation that's focusing on this issue, so we can take care of it all at once. What we'll commit as a staff level is that we will bring this back very quickly in terms of what council wants to see.
So, if I understand you right, you're saying we should probably go ahead and approve it as-is, and then we could adjust and fine-tune it later?
If it's council's desire to approve this, approve it as-is, and then provide staff with direction to bring it back. And actually, we're going to have to split this apart into one issue that deals with annexation, another issue that deals with subdivisions and replats, and then make the necessary adjustments in all the corresponding ordinances that exist that relate to this issue.
Councilmember Santos?
Mayor, what I thought was going to be an easy change turned out to be a little bit bigger, which is fine. So, I, I would be okay with, with your recommendation. So, there's public hearings that need to be held, so we'll have them.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing on item eight D. Anybody like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close that item. I'll now open public hearing on item-
Mayor Coombs, I haven't read those other two items until the record-
Okay, just, okay, just, okay. Okay, we'll do them one at a time, even though he presented all three of them together. Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead and read the, the second item.
So, the next two items that are, public hearing on ordinance two thousand twelve forty-one, a bill for an ordinance amending section fifteen oh two, oh nine oh A, two point four oh point oh three oh D, fourteen point oh five point oh three oh, and fourteen point oh five point oh three oh C four of the Longmont Municipal Code on Convayance Plats. And then also, a public hearing on ordinance two thousand twelve forty-two, a bill for an ordinance amending repealing and reenacting chapter fifteen point oh two one two oh, repealing chapter fifteen point oh five to ten, and amending section fifteen point oh seven point oh seven oh of the Longmont Municipal Code on Public and Private Improvements.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing on any one of those three items. Would anybody like to speak on item eight D, eight E? Okay, we'll just start with eight D first. Anybody like to speak on eight D? Seeing no one, I'll close eight D. Now, I'll open eight E. Would anybody like to speak on eight E? Seeing no one, I'll close eight E public hearing. Now, I'll open a public hearing on item eight F. Does anybody like to speak on item eight F? Seeing no one, I'll close item eight F. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move, let's get to bigger on my screen here, ordinance two thousand twelve dash forty.
All right. Let's vote on that one. Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Witt absent. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move ordinance two thousand twelve dash forty-one.
Okay, let's vote. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Witt absent. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move ordinance two thousand twelve dash forty-two.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Witt absent. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you. I would like to move that we direct staff to bring back the changes that I recommended regarding two thousand twelve dash forty-one.
I'll second it. Let's vote on that. And that passes six to zero.
Mayor Coombs, next item is public hearing on item, ordinance two thousand twelve forty-three, which approves the land use amendment to the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan for Quail Campus Land Use Amendment, generally located north of Quail Road and east of Main Street. And Don Burchett is here to answer any questions, although I don't think he has a presentation. Is that correct?
Okay. Are there any questions from council members? Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering, what is the rationale to have the museum be designated as parks and open space as opposed to public? Because it's not, I mean, it's actually a cultural facility and not necessarily a park or open space.
Excuse me while I find the right council con. Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levison, Don Burchett, Development Services Division. The, the Quail Campus itself, which does contain the museum and the parcels that are on the, or at least the southern half of that parcel, was all identified as park, greenway, and open space many years ago. This, so, so it is existing currently and with that designation. It's really the area north of that that's being proposed for this change. As far as really going and, and why did we leave that as public or not, quasi-public, I don't really know the, the understanding unless, again, that was done so that we could use bunnies from the Parks Department to do the master plan for the entire area when it was originally developed, but I don't know. That was done back in nineteen ninety-eight roughly, and that was before I started here. So, I, I don't have, have that history to tell you why they didn't break those apart and designate it public, quasi-public.
I, you know, I was just curious. The other thing is, when we're doing an update like this, are we going to go back to the Quail Campus master plan and, and then look at that and see where that plan needs to be updated to take into consideration changes over time now, since that, that would be a pretty major change that would affect that, you know, the master plan, you know, might need an update, is what I was thinking.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levison? I'll, I'll, I'll let her give you part of it, but the, the change for this land use will change the land use from public, quasi-public to parks, greenway, and open space, which covers that area in the master plan, which is ultimately going to be park, greenway, open space. So, really, the change is meant to reflect the upcoming use, which is what the comp plan is supposed to do. And I'll let Kim address the update to the master plan.
Good evening. Kim Sugar, Natural Resources Manager. At this point, we are not planning to update the master plan. The purpose of doing this comp plan amendment is to designate park land, which then allows us to use park improvement funds to develop the additional parking in the tennis complex, which is the next phase in the, in the master plan.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing on this item. Is there any who'd like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move ordinance two thousand twelve dash forty-three.
All right, let's vote. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Witt absent.
Mayor Coombs, your next item has four ordinances associated with it. I'll read all four of them, so you can do the public hearing however you'd like. It is regarding Roosevelt Park Apartment Redevelopment Plan. The first one is a public hearing on ordinance two thousand twelve forty-four, which conditionally approves the Roosevelt Park Apartments rezoning from C Commercial to MU Mixed Use, generally located in the south half of block fifteen, original town Longmont. The second item is a public hearing on ordinance two thousand twelve forty-five, which is conditionally approves the vacation of a twenty-four-foot-wide alley and utility easement generally located north of Longspeak Avenue between Main Street and Kaufman Street. The third item is a public hearing on an ordinance two thousand twelve forty-six, conditionally approving the vacation of the easterly six feet of Kaufman Street, generally located north of Longspeak Avenue. And the final item would be a public hearing on ordinance two thousand twelve forty-seven, which conditionally approves the vacation of a portion of Longspeak Avenue, generally located west of Main Street and east of Kaufman. And I believe both Don Burchett and Kim Sugar are here, if you have, are you making a presentation?
All right. So, any questions from council? If not, I'll open the public hearing on first, the, the first item, the dash oh twenty twelve dash forty-four. Is there anybody who'd like to speak on item twenty twelve dash forty-four? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on that. So, why don't we go through the public hearing on all, all of them, and then we'll come back and vote them one at a time. Now, I'll open the public hearing on item twenty twelve dash forty-five. Is anybody like to speak on that item? Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on item twenty twelve dash forty-five. Next, I'll open the public hearing on twenty twelve dash forty-six. Does anybody like to speak on public hearing on that item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on twenty twelve dash forty-six. And finally, I'll open the public hearing on twenty twelve dash forty-seven. Is anybody like to speak on that item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on twenty twelve dash forty-seven. Councilmember Levison?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to move ordinance twenty twelve forty-four for approval.
All right, let's vote on that one. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Witt absent. Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to approve, move for approval, ordinance twenty twelve forty-five.
All right, let's vote on that one. Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Witt absent. Councilmember Levison?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to move for approval, ordinance twenty twelve forty-six.
All right, let's vote. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Witt absent. Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move for approval, ordinance twenty twelve forty-seven.
All right, let's vote. Bring. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Witt absent.
Your next, next item also has four items associated with it, so I'll read all four of those. It is the Collins Annexation. The first item is a public hearing on a, on ordinance two thousand twelve forty-eight, which is a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the Collins Annexation, that's generally located east of County Line Road and south of Highway one nineteen, and zoning the property A agriculture. The second item is a public hearing on ordinance two thousand twelve forty-nine, which is a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as a portion of the Collins property, the premises to OJ Craft tenant. The next item is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Collins subdivision deed of conservation easement in gross. And the last item associated with this is approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Collins subdivision quitclaim deed. This is the one that I talked about at the first of the meeting with the change to the verbiage in it. And I believe Brad Skoll is here, or was, is here to address questions on this.
Are there any questions from council for Brad? All right, I'll open up the public hearing on Collins Annexation, item eight I. Is there anybody who'd like to speak? Okay, we'll see the two thousand, two thousand twelve forty-eight. I'll open that for the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on, on that? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Next, we'll go to two thousand twelve forty-nine. Are there any questions from council on that? Councilmember Finley? No, okay. All right, I'll open the hearing on two thousand twelve forty-nine. Does anybody like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on two thousand forty-nine. I think that's it. All right, so let's go back and vote for- Councilmember Santos?
Mayor, I would move ordinance two thousand twelve dash forty-eight.
All right. Let's, let's vote. Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Witt absent. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you. I would move ordinance two thousand twelve dash forty-nine.
All right, let's vote. Oh, you haven't cleared it yet? Okay, let's vote now. That passes, Alex? That passes six to zero with Councilmember Witt absent. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Collins subdivision deed of conservation easement in gross.
All right, let's vote. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Witt absent. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you. I would move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Collins subdivision quitclaim deed.
All right, let's vote. That passes six to zero, Councilmember Witt absent. Yeah, let's, uh, let's take a break. Yeah, let's take a five-minute break. Yeah, let's take a five-minute break. All right, let's re-adjourn the, the meeting. It was a little bit longer than five minutes. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Before we get into the consent agenda, I'd like to reorganize the general business. I'd like to, if, if council will condol, condulge it, can we move item D before C, the board appointments before the oil and gas regulations? Does anybody have a problem with that?
I think that's a great idea.
Well, they're not really a motion. Is there consensus at least for that?
Yes.
Because I don't want to go through the whole voting, you know? If we have consensus, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're just going to move D before C.
All right, flipping their orders.
Okay, Mayor Coombs, before we move on to the consent agenda, we've discovered there was a numbering snafu in, in the electronic packet that was on the website. Ordinance two thousand twelve thirty-eight was listed as two thousand twelve thirty-seven on the electronic packet. In the hard copies and on your agendas, and the ones that were posted, it was two thousand twelve thirty-eight. So the action you took was on the correct ordinance tonight. We will correct the electronic packet so that folks that were looking at that can make sure that they had the right version.
Thank you.
Okay, so next is a consent agenda item. First item is ordinance two thousand twelve fifty, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the Parker annexation generally located south of Third Avenue and west of Sunset Golf Course and zoning the property E-two, a state residential public hearing and second reading is scheduled for July twenty-fourth, two thousand twelve. The second item is a resolution two thousand twelve fifty-two. It's approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and history Colorado for grant funding for an intensive historical survey of north, old north Longmont neighborhood. Item nine C is a resolution two thousand twelve fifty-three, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Longspreek Water District for a permanent exchange of water service. Item nine D is resolution two thousand twelve fifty-four, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Longspreek Water District for an emergency interconnection agreement. And staff does not need to pull any items from the consent.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move the consent agenda.
All right, let's vote. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Witt absent.
Next item is general business, the Longmont General Improvement District Number One Resolution.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that we recess as the Longmont City Council and convene as the Board of Directors of the Long, of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One.
All right, let's, let's vote. We, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Witt absent.
Okay, and this is a resolution LGID two thousand twelve oh three, resolution of the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One enacting a supplemental budget and making an additional appropriation for the expenses and liabilities of the district for the fiscal year beginning January one, two thousand twelve. And Teresa Malloy will make a presentation.
Good evening. Teresa Malloy, this budget manager for the city, and this is an accompanying resolution, accompanying the appropriation ordinance, or appropriation ordinance, yes, that you guys just acted on. It appropriates five thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars in the GID budget for pedestrian light pole bonnets. Brings the total GID budget to one hundred and fourteen thousand three fifty-five, and I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Councilmember Santos?
I have no questions. I'm just going, going to move this, Mr. Chair. So, if that's all right?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I move that we approve LGID two thousand twelve dash zero-three.
All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Witt absent. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move that we adjourn as the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One and reconvene as the Longmont City Council.
All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Witt absent.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is two thousand thirteen Budget Direction, and Jim Golden is here to make the presentation.
Mayor Coombs, Member Council, and Jim Golden, Director of Finance Support Services. And tonight, we are in the middle of our budget process here at the city, kind of in the deep part of it where we're trying to finish our revenue projections as well as get market data for salaries. Those are two large variables in our, in our general fund budget as well as in our other funds. And so, at this point in time, we are reviewing budgets. The city manager conducted budget meetings over the last two weeks, three, or three more days of budget meetings with the Budget Committee. And so at this point in time, we wanted to check in with the city council, do a quick review of where we're at in general with the, with the general fund itself, and get some direction on some key policy questions that will drive the two thousand and thirteen general fund budget and as well as the Public Improvement Fund. So, what, if we could bring up the PowerPoint, please? So what, I would quickly, we, we've came to you previously earlier this year and gave you some information on the key financial policies that are involved in this budget process. This is one of them, that we will have a balanced budget. The city will balance operating revenues with operating expenditures. Fund balances will be used as a funding source in the general fund for capital and one-time expenditures only. Second is the sales and use tax allocation policy. This is in regards to the two percent non earmarked sales and use tax, which we currently split between the general fund and the Public Improvement Fund. This policy has set the current allocation of that as eighty-eight point three percent to the general fund and eleven point seven percent to the Public Improvement Fund. And that's been that way for about three years now, through two thousand and twelve. The second half of this policy is regarding the allocation of the dollars between the two funds in the sense of the sales tax and the use tax. So, a few years back, we changed or added this to the policy so that use tax revenues would be directed to the Public Improvement Fund, which is primarily one-time expenses, whereas the sales tax expenses, uh, sales tax revenues would be directed primarily to the general fund. So again, the use tax is the most volatile, has a lot of swings to it. Therefore, we'd be able to react quicker in the Public Improvement Fund by possibly delaying projects as opposed to where in the general fund it's pretty heavy on salaries and benefit expenses. And then finally, the third policy here is our employee pay. And that is that the city will strive to establish prevailing market ranges of pay for city positions. So I wanted to give you a little bit of information. This is updated from your council communication for tonight. Wrote that one before the end of the month. And so, we do have some more current information that I did email you. Sales tax is up 2.3% through May. Our use tax is up 3.7% through May. So combined, we are up 2.5% for the five months so far this year. The combined sales and use tax was up 9.2% after the first two months of the year. But in the subsequent three months, they actually are down 1.1%. So that, as you can imagine, as we are trying to project our revenues for the rest of 2012 and for 2013 from these sources, that is a major concern for us. And as usual, we try to be conservative in setting these. We are looking at the different trends that are developing. We are still having some strong sources of retail. But we did lose some of it from Sears. We do have concerns about looking into the future with the mall redevelopment that we will not be able to count on ongoing mall revenues during a redevelopment. And we're concerned about that for 2013. Primary employers are a major source of use tax but also provide a certain level of sales tax. And there's a number of primary employers, not a large number, but significant primary employers are, had good years in 2011. I'll put it that way. So, they did very strongly in their use tax production in 2011. And we are not matching that activity in 2012. So that is beginning to show in the last few months why our use tax growth has dropped dramatically. We still have strong use tax growth from our building permit area, although that's not a significant number. And we also still have growth from our outside automobile sales outside the city. But the primary employers, which is probably the largest amount of the use tax, is, you know, we are very concerned about that and having a hard time projecting that very strongly into the future with the trends that we are seeing currently. So that is a concern as we go forward here. Last line I'm up here off of the sales and use tax and going into our actual general fund expenditures for this year. And this is updated through May, I mean through June, through six months' activity. But we are within 1.6% of where we should be for our budgeted expenditures in the general fund, which is, it's still good to be below budget. It's not as strong of savings percentages as we've seen in previous years. Not a surprise to us because we have budgeted, we did make adjustments to our pay plan this year so that we are paying closer to market for those employees that were below market for a number of years. But that did in turn take up some of the salary savings that we would normally experience from year to year. So, it's a concern in our ability to project fund balance available at the end of this year for next year's one-time expenses. We are not looking as strong in that area as we have in recent years. So this is how we ended 2011 with our general fund fund balance. We reported this to you in a different format previously. Do have it within the council communication as well. The unassigned fund balance, you heard about that at the last regular meeting. I'm sure you couldn't have really grasped that that quickly because, you know, as an accounting professional, I'm still having problems with this unassigned fund balance concept in a governmental fund. So what I wanted to do is take from the cap for what we had in there for our fund balance and show you, work it down to what we typically will have available for fund balance for one-time expenses in the subsequent year. So, our unassigned fund balance is made up of emergency reserves, which the council has set aside. This is in excess of the Tabor Reserve and then our encumbrances from last year. And we have used fund balance in 2012 for three different purposes that I outlined in your communication. Relocation of museum artifacts was the largest dollar amount and primary amount of this, $344,000. But we also had the accumulated leave that we paid out to the previous city manager as well as economic development incentives, all of which were unbudgeted expenses that we used fund balance for in 2012 already. So that brings us down to a little over 1.1 million that is available in the general fund from last year's activity and therefore available for next year for one-time expenses. And comparatively, last year, the number we were looking at was $2.6 million when we ended the year. So, we have a very limited amount of dollars available for fund balance, I mean for one-time expenses in 2013. This could grow as we project our potential expenditure savings and our revenues from 2012. But, you know, based on everything else I just told you about, the sales tax and our expenses, it's not going to grow by much probably. So, you get an idea of where we're at in general fund. The Public Improvement Fund is a little bit of a better scenario. We did have $345,000 fund balance carryover from 2012, mostly from excess use tax revenue as well as from some projects that we closed out. And then, this year, our use tax is, although it doesn't look strong at that percentage, it is much greater than what we budgeted for this year. And so, with the use tax being directed towards the Public Improvement Fund, we can expect to have over $800,000 of use tax that is unbudgeted in 2012 and therefore be available for use as a fund balance in 2013. So that gives us 1.15 million of total fund balance available, which, and combined with what we'll project for our sales and use tax revenues, will be, will give us enough revenue to be able to meet the 2013 CIP for the Public Improvement Fund, at least as it was projected in last year's CIP's fund statement, which we did attach to your council communication. So, not as big a concern there as far as being able to meet that, and I'll come back to that in a second. So our major budget challenges are the same two that I've been telling you about for a number of years now. And those include the allocation of that 2% sales and use tax between the general fund and the Public Improvement Fund. And then the use of general fund fund balance to fund ongoing type expenses with a one-year commitment. We have $540,000 of those in 2012's budget.
First, on the sales and use tax allocation. It was...
Councilmember, question?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just could you go back?
Yes, okay.
One slide? That use of general fund balance to fund $540,000 of ongoing type expenses with a one-year commitment, is that the number that we're referring to? That they're ongoing expenses, but we do not have recurring revenue streams?
That's correct.
Do you know, just, I mean, you obviously know, but is it easy to tell us? Or could you at some point? Or is it upcoming in the presentation? I would just like to know what the list is of those expenses.
Actually, the second attachment on page 423 of your packet, and it's not labeled as an attachment, would be B though.
Thank you. That's perfect. You're on it. Thanks.
Thanks. And I will come back to that here in a second. I won't get into those individual line items. But on the sales and use tax, it was historically a split of 85% general fund and 15% Public Improvement Fund. But there was a lot of variation of that over the years. And in the past three budgets, we have used a split of 88.3% for the general fund, 11.7% for the Public Improvement Fund. So that's the highest allocation to the general fund that has been in its history. And it has been necessary to do that in the past three budgets for us to be able to, you know, provide ongoing revenues to support our ongoing expenses. But in turn, what has happened is it's reduced the amount of dollars available in that Public Improvement Fund. We have a large amount of debt service budgeted, about 2.7 million of bond payments in our Public Improvement Fund. So anything beyond that 2.7 million that we generate from the use tax is available for other individual CIP projects. So as I mentioned before, we do have $1.1 million to add to that from fund balance in that fund. In the past couple of budgets, we have had to actually transfer dollars from the general fund fund balance to the Public Improvement Fund fund balance in order to accomplish that same level of funding for the Public Improvement Fund. Wouldn't have been able to do it this year sitting at 1.1 million in the general fund. But luckily, the revenue in, from the use tax and Public Improvement Fund past two years, this and last, has been able to give us that fund balance moving forward to get by in 2013. The difference in that allocation is $950,000 between the two funds, at least in 2012 budget dollars. And I mentioned that we did transfer last year, or this year, $266,000 from the general fund. Last year, it was $850,000 that we transferred from the general fund to the Public Improvement Fund to get it up to that funding level. It's kind of a little game that we've been playing with fund balance from year to year. But what we're finding now, because of that reduction in fund balance availability in the general fund, we're not going to be able to play that game going forward any longer. So, the other aspect was the ongoing expenses with one-year commitment that we just referred to. The attachment is $540,000 of ongoing type expenses. We are using general fund fund balance to fund those. We have been doing this at different levels of dollar amounts since 2002. Certain amount of these type of expenses, not necessarily the same ones that are, all of the same ones that are on that list. Some of them probably have been there most of that time period. I believe the rideaway maintenance and parks maintenance probably been in there, different dollar amounts, but they've been in there probably since 2002. Our financial policy that I mentioned earlier is that we will balance our operating expenditures with operating revenues. So really, this is not really keeping to that policy when we continue to do this. So, before I get into that, so these two are the two major challenges that we've been facing in our budgets for at least three years now, if not longer. But certainly with the sales and use tax allocation for the past three budgets and now looking at it again in 2013 as well, looking at it for now, the fourth year. So, we believe that we can't expect to just continue to hope that next year's revenues are going to solve this issue. We think we've reached the point where we really need to move towards right sizing the general fund budget. We really can't expect a large dollar growth of revenues to bail us out here. Hopefully, the mall will get redeveloped. But we have to be realistic and realize that there's, if we are using the urban renewal authority concept to fund a redevelopment, a certain amount of that 2% of sales and use taxes from the mall, we'll probably be going towards the urban renewal authority. So, can't really expect to get in the general fund or the Public Improvement Fund a large amount of help from that area. So, it's important that we begin to get serious about the situation we're facing year by year here. And I think, again, declining fund balance in the general fund. Now, when I say fund balance, I'm talking about available fund balance. We have a large fund balance. So let's not, anyone get carried away thinking we've got declining reserves. Our reserves have been growing in our recent budgets and our emergency reserves are as high as they've ever been. But our available unreserved dollars that we use for these one-time expenses, they're just not, we're not carrying as much from one year to next as we have in previous years. So, what we're thinking is it's time to kind of take a look at trying to right-size the general fund or resetting the general fund. As the city manager has been telling me, we need to push the reset button on this general fund. And we probably can't expect to do that all in one year. But we do, we would like to try to begin to implement that to some degree. I think the fact that the Public Improvement Fund does have a large fund balance carryover, it may allow us to get through with this sales and use tax allocation for another year. But I think we do need to get serious probably about the ongoing expenses with a one-year commitment. So, we are going to talk about some policy questions in a minute. A couple more things I wanted to cover with you are the other challenges, also important challenges, not the ones that we've been facing to this same degree from year to year. But first is the parks and greenway maintenance fee. As we discussed at your retreat in April, it expires at the end of this year. It's $470,000 in the general fund. So if that goes away, that's $470,000 less of revenue available. We have pay increases that would, we're doing collective bargaining currently over the next couple of weeks, which is another variable that goes into our budget setting. But for every 1% of increase to those collectively bargain employees, that's going to cost us $188,000. I'm just throwing at you numbers that, you know, 1% type things. We do not have these tied down yet to what they will actually be. So every 1% of increase to our non-collectively bargain employees is about $227,000. So over $400,000 from the general fund. These are just general fund numbers for all general fund employees for a 1% pay increase. Our pension, actual reports just came in in the last week or two. And I was actually pleased even though the costs went up. It didn't go up dramatically. Our increase in contributions is going up from like, it's going up 0.4%. In total, it would be an increase of $72,000 if the general fund, to the general fund only, if the general fund, if the city were to pay the whole contribution there. Level 1 expenses in our general fund, those are the expenses that our staff have identified as being necessary to maintain service levels. Theoretically, they're going to, we're going to incur them whether we fund them or not. We're still reviewing them. As I said, we're going through the budget process. That doesn't mean necessarily they're all going to be in there. But we are looking at them, but they are numbering over $580,000 so far this year. Not going to go higher. But they are at that amount currently. Our workers' compensation liability insurance charges to the general fund could potentially increase over $200,000 next year. Most of that increases in workers' compensation. Our fund has dropped from the opening of claims in the past year. So we are looking at trying to restore that up to a stronger level. Healthcare cost increases our general fund share at a full 7%. If it were to be the full 7% as negotiated last year with Kaiser, then it would be up to $400,000 out of the general fund. Step pay increases in the general fund for police and fire employees are $130,000. And then we have some increased costs for master police officer positions. It's a level of position that the police officers have the ability to reach, but it's not budgeted. So the increase for those that have reached that would be $61,000. And then finally, this last one is a one-time cost actually, but I can't talk about the general fund without throwing it in there. We have a large dollar amount that we'll probably be requesting for the HATS project, which is our enterprise resource planning system. It's our human resources and accounting technology system. We did get initial dollars budgeted for it in the 2012 budget, went out to bid. We have more realistic dollars now currently. And the general fund share of that would be a little over $300,000 one-time expense in 2013. So, what I'd like to do is first stop here and see if you have further questions on anything I've presented. And then after that, we can get into the questions that I had, looking for some policy direction from you. No questions?
No questions.
Must have been a great presentation. Okay, so we'll... Okay, so we'll...
Now they're coming in.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. Jim, what I'd like to do is, as you're going through the individual items, I've got questions along the way, so instead of just piling on, you know, I'd rather just, you know, we can have time after each section for questions, if you don't mind.
No problem.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Going back, again, relates to my earlier question, the 2012 general fund ongoing expenses with one-year commitment. Are you familiar enough with these items to just briefly, in one sentence or less, actually just explain what they are? Like, I mean, for example, I know what, I can assume what temp wages for Bright Eyes Coordinator is, it's probably the reading program, but I don't know what a neutral zone program operations, General Zod, Superman, that kind of stuff, but...
I'll give it a shot, and then if I need help, I'm sure there's people back there who would love to help me.
Great, thank you.
So Mayor and Councilmember Bagley, so yes, the Bright Eyes Coordinator, that's the mayor's book club, that's temp wages for that staff person. The Neutral Zone Program is a program that's run out of the youth center.
What does it do?
After-school.
Is it the after-school program?
It is an after-school program.
Okay.
The Poverty Initiative is, I think you guys have heard quite a bit about this. I can have Karen certainly fill you in more.
The Circles Program?
Is that the Circles? Yes, that's the Circles.
Oh, is that the Pilot Poverty Initiative?
Reduction.
Okay, yeah, yes, yes, Reduction Initiative. So, but it's not Circles, or is it? Here she is.
Just cover the ones that...
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember Bagley. So the Pilot Poverty Reduction Initiative is actually the RISE program, which is the, it's a project that City Council supported, and it's a five-year initiative. It does, excuse me, include some support for the Circles effort, which our RISE participants are a part of.
Okay.
I'm sure there's more that are...
Would you like me to continue to go down the list?
Oh, yeah. The thing is, every time this comes up, I always think, I wonder what those are. And now that we've got a list, I just would like to be able to relate in the future to myself what they are.
You bet. So I will continue down the list. So the gap funding for winter sheltering needs. This is an effort, this I think is our third year of funding that. This really supplements what the city funds for the Boulder Shelter for the homeless that's in the city of Boulder. So what we have is that some of the, some of our homeless folks that need sheltering over the winter season, from October through April, have difficulty accessing the services at the Boulder Shelter. And so this helps to fund a warming center, we call that, at Agape Center, that's the facility, the church facility on Highway 66 across from Walmart. And then also, it helps to, for those of you that attended the Suites grand opening, you heard something about the CHOP program. So we provide some funding for the housing authority to actually house families who are homeless in that six-month period from October through April, to house them actually at the Suites, and then their supportive services with that. So it really helps to bridge the gap in helping people who are homeless during the winter season to find shelter. The community inclusion funding, actually, this is funding that, we probably have been funding this for about 10 years. This is council support for the Multicultural Action Plan, which basically helps the Multicultural Action Committee to implement some of the plan strategies that include cultural events and other kinds of services that are part of the Multicultural Action Plan. Additional, these are all mine, additional temp wages for shelving at the library. So this is probably the second year that we have funded that on a one-time basis, and that is really to help us for additional temp wages, to have shelters, to help get the materials back on the shelf at the library. And then the temp wages for the Neighborhood Resources Specialist is that this is a half-time temporary person that helps us implement the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan strategies that also has been a council work plan item for the past several years. And then the parks ones aren't mine, but go ahead.
I can answer those ones. So contracted tree maintenance is for tree trimming. We have a portion in the ongoing budget, so this is just to supplement that, to do tree trimming around the city. Contracted right-of-way maintenance, again, we have a portion in the ongoing budget that supplements that.
What does that mean, contracted right-of-way operations? What is that?
To pay contractors for mowing and right-of-ways, maintenance in the right-of-ways.
So just taking care of right-of-ways, okay.
So in those two cases, I believe they were actually, used to be part of our ongoing budget, and we're, you know, as we got to the point where we couldn't fit things, and we're making cuts, so to speak, we decided to move them from ongoing into this category of using one-time dollars with a one-year commitment. So the other ones, sometimes they start as a three-year program, and they become longer than that. So that's why we start those sometimes with using fund balance and using them as a one-time type expense, thinking they may end, but then they keep going.
So mosquito abatement, again, this is a scenario where we have a good chunk of mosquito abatement in our ongoing budget. This was just the additional increase amount. This is just for the testing. It does not include citywide spraying.
And Mayor and City Council, then the last two items on this list, the senior services, so that $5,000 was actually to supplement the amount of printing that we have for the, we called the gold, used to be called the Golden Outlook, but we've changed that. So that's really the newsletter that advertises all the programs and services, and that really is, we just bumped that up in 2012 because we have a greater demand for publicizing and distributing that publication. And then the final item there is to increase the general fund transfer to the Callahan House operations. And again, that was an expense that was reduced a couple of years ago, and we have really spent down the fund balance for the Callahan House operations. And if we are to really continue to operate the house at the staffing that we have, is that we are looking at meeting an infusion of additional general fund transfer and to supplement the revenues that we receive from rental of the facility to operate the house. And we were only able to do that in a one-time for 2012.
And Jim, this is for you. How, you said you can't do it this year? How long would it take to figure out how to get rid of these and put them into the general fund, so we don't have any 2,000-whatever general fund ongoing expenses with a one-year commitment?
Well, Mayor Coombs, member of council, I didn't say we couldn't do that this year. I said that's something we should begin to look at for this year, and we would hope to try to accomplish either fund it or stop funding it altogether in this year's budget. That would, and that is one of the questions I'll be asking you in about two or three questions.
Cool, then you've answered my questions. Thank you.
If I can add to that discussion, I think one of the things that we're seeing as we look at the budget when we talk about resetting, is that three, four years ago, the economy took a dive. And I think during that time, a lot of cities were hoping that the economy itself, that the economy itself would come back to the way it was, and we would see growth rates that existed prior to that downfall. I think what we're seeing internationally, nationally, and now, and also locally, is the fact that I think we're, the economy itself has reset. And so when we look at the future growth potential that we have in new revenues, I think what we've seen over the last three years is actually going to be pretty consistent over the next, I think Jim and I have talked about at least five to seven years. So what happens is, is then you have a budget that existed pre-economy, when you were in those growth cycles, and so now, all of a sudden, you have your revenues flattening out, and your expenditures the way they were, and so it really starts creating other issues for you. And then as you start taking larger looks at the organization in this discussion, when we talk about things like adding additional parks or adding additional facilities, what you're also doing in that is adding additional operation, operation costs. And so then that starts placing additional pressures on the general fund and how we approach it. And so what's happening is, and when Jim mentioned a reset, I think it's really looking at what we're doing as an organization, and how does that fit into the current revenue picture that we're seeing? You know, that's fundamentally the issue that I think we're going to have to face. It is not something that frankly, we're going to be able to tackle in one year. This is going to have to be more than likely a two-year initiative, but I think we need to start those discussions. To kind of add to what I'm seeing in this budget process, when I look at things, and I, you know, I see temporary positions that have been temporary positions for over 10 years within core operating budgets. And so there are a lot of things that we're starting to identify as we continue to move forward as questions that we need to bring up, and we need to look more in depth in terms of the budget and what the future looks like. And so we're going to continue going through this process. Fundamentally, what I would like to do is actually go back to more of a zero-based budgeting concept, instead of an incremental budgeting where we're looking at what we're adding, so that we can really evaluate what we're doing at the core of our operations, and then start moving forward, because I think that's a look that we have to take, and then move into that performance budgeting-based aspect of this. But the issues that we're talking about, we're not wanting to get you all into the detail just yet, but we want to talk about the issues at 30,000 feet to say, this is the world as we see it, and we don't think this world is going to change in the next few years. And so we're going to have to start adapting to it and fundamentally reset the budgets in terms of how we operate.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you. Well, and it's also getting back to our core, what we, what we're supposed to be doing, you know. I've had this discussion in several budgets where I think we've gone outside of what our charge as a city has been, and whether or not we can partner with other organizations to do other things that are outside of our core responsibilities as a city. Now, I have suggestions here, you know, as far as credit card fees, packets, sponsorships for, like, for Rhythm on the River. You know, I would like to see the general ongoing, you know, this one, general ongoing expenses with one-year commitment cut in half this, for next year. Yeah, zero would be great, but half, you know, that's what I'd like to see, because again, it's, we see it every year. We, these are things, and then we're going to get the request for the council one-time funding sources, you know, that's coming. I'm looking at this and seeing, why are we the, why does everyone come to us? We don't have, you know, people think, you know, the city's got money. Not necessarily. We're on a very tight budget, and we can't be everything to everyone. So, you know, but let's get to the questions. But again, I have things regarding, I got questions regarding the credit card fees, how we can, I'd like to see every board and commission go paperless. I think that would be a huge expense that, you know, I've asked Valerie to get information on, you know, the staff, staff time, paper, postage, and if we're delivering those, delivering those packets outside of postage, are we hand-delivering those packets via, you know, our mail, our mail service? You know, I'd like to know if we can have sponsorship of Rhythm on the River. I think we should have sponsorships, you know, we have three breweries in this town. I'd like to see perhaps alcohol sales at Rhythm on the River to help pay for some of the expense of Rhythm on the River. I think that would be huge. Jim, I know you got questions you want us to...
If I can add something before Jim gets started, something was actually mentioned in the discussion to kind of talk about what we're seeing in the budget reviews, and something was mentioned about credit cards. As we were going through the budget reviews, one of the things that we saw is that there was 416...
Over 400,000.
Over $400,000 in credit card fees last year that was basically absorbed within the budgets. Traditionally, what we're seeing in a lot of cases, in a lot of organizations, is they're either building that in, in terms of the cost of service, or they're charging a fee when you utilize those credit cards, because it goes into a more core philosophy of, should I, as an individual, or should Sandy, as an individual, pay for something that I'm using as an individual to meet my needs? So if I want to use a credit card, should Sandy be fundamentally paying a portion of that cost in terms of the overall expense?
Be covering, you know, the budget.
So, you know, so, you know, one of the questions in this is really looking at that to say, if we said we want to come back with actually a charge for the credit card usage, is that something that the council is, would like us to look at? Because what it would do is offset that $416,000 of expenditures within the budget. Now, that's a big hit, but I will say, even with that, there's still issues that we're going to have to deal with to really bring this to where I think we need to when we talk about resetting or right-sizing.
It just so happened, I happened to be, last Friday, and then again, Monday, here at Civic Center, you guys were having your budget discussions. I just happened to walk in and just sit down and listen. So, you know, I found it very educational, and hopefully next year that, you know, we'll be invited to, you know, not to speak, but just to be able to listen and see how you guys put this together and then present it to us. It's invaluable, so.
Okay, before I move into the questions, one other thing that you mentioned that I, since you brought it up, that the council one-time is part, typically part of those one-time expenses that we only have 1.1 million dollars for. So the council one-time may not be as large as it typically has been in the past as well. So we haven't set that or anything yet, but just to point that out.
If there are some things that you'd like to see from those organizations, I'd be happy to ask for those questions when they come, because they generally present to you, you know, usually in September, early September. And so if there are additional things that you'd like to see from them, please let me know, and I'd be happy to get that from them, so that they're prepared for their budget presentations.
Well, and before, as Jim gets into this, I know there's probably a bit of shock in some of the discussion we're starting to have with you all. I will say that it's probably not any different than what other cities are going through and what they've been having to go through. It's frankly, not any different than what I've gone through in the past. I think like with any issue, this is an issue that can be managed, and we just have to move through those discussions.
Councilmember Levison?
Yes, Mayor. Since Councilmember Bagley, you know, opened up the page on one-time expenses, there were a couple of points that I had typed out that I'd like to piggyback maybe on his comments that might make things a little clearer. If we could look at how many years each of the programs that we're doing, that we've been using the money this way, I think that might be instructive. That's the kind of what you were asking, Councilmember Bagley. The other question I had in the past budgets is to look at the programs that we run to see which were started with grant funding. And if the reason that, I mean, there's a budget book that, you know, Doug Brown gave me years ago when I was first on council, that I basically digested page by page, and one of the really big pitfalls cities get into is, you get a grant for something, and then you might, might be two or three years, and then it becomes a core piece of the operation, rather than having that evaluation about whether or not that was, as Councilmember, you know, Santos mentioned, is really, you know, what you would have done anyway had you not had the money. So I think we have to be careful about, if you want to call it mission creep or whatever. And also, I, you know, I'm willing to spend some time, as Councilmember Santos and I did several years ago, going through everything, you know, line by line in the budget. I know that strikes fear into the heart of staff, but I'm thinking that there are a number of these items here on the one-time list that could be reincorporated into... um, a number of these items here on the one-time list that could be reincorporated, um, into, uh, department funding. Um, because although there are some that are not, I understand the contracted tree maintenance, if we have a major windstorm, we need to budget some money so that we can restore services, um, and we can get trees cleared away. I remember, um, how thankful the public was the last time we had a major event, weather event that took down a lot of trees, how, um, having those contractors lined up already and having the money to pay for it was very, very good service that we got complimented on as a city. So some of the, some of those items, um, might be that kind of an insurance policy that's really one-time events that, um, truly have to be looked at in that, in that manner because there's no way we're going to be able to guestimate if we're going to get that September snowstorm that's going to bring down branches. So there are things that you, you just do your best guess on. Um, and then, uh, you know, I, I think that, um, whether or not we should evaluate, um, where some of these one-time items would end up on the, the, uh, budget prioritization list. That was the other question.
Mayor Coombs, Mayor Council, I di- I didn't, uh, plan to get into prioritization in detail, although since I am making a reference to it in some of these questions, I, I think I, um, made reference earlier this year to it in our, uh, update in the end of April. Um, for the new council members, I'll, uh, briefly again explain that three years ago as our, um, as we went through the beginning of the tough times, we wanted to react and try to come up and prepare for potentially having to reduce services if necessary. We needed a methodology to do it. We, uh, went to the council during its retreat with a couple of different, uh, options for consideration and they directed us to, uh, go down the road of this what we call prioritization process. It, uh, was, uh, kind of fast-tracked and we, uh, did that over the course of about four months, um, in, three years ago in 2009. And we did include some public input and we used the strategic directions from the, uh, um, Focus on Long Mine Strategic Plan. And then we had a lot of staff, uh, participation, identified numerous services within our general fund and we only did this at the, within the general fund. We didn't go to other, uh, departments or funds because, uh, uh, the focus at that point was trying to balance our general fund. And, uh, going through a comparison of how each of these services influence the results that are identified in those strategic, uh, areas, we would come out with a score and in turn we scored services from top to bottom based on these scores and separated them into four quartiles, uh, equal numbers of services in each. And we found that we're spending most of our dollars in the upper quartiles, which is a good thing, but it did give us, um, results that we could utilize and in theory you would, uh, if you had the ability to add resources, then hopefully you would, you, you would add them to, uh, those services in the highest quartiles. But in the cases where we had to, where we have to reduce, uh, our services or because of reduced resources, then we would, uh, look at those in this, in the, um, lower quartiles. Wouldn't mean that we would eliminate just those entirely. You might do lesser from the upper quartiles and more from the lower quartiles. We had different approaches to consider. We did not utilize that methodology. And so my questions to you tonight will, uh, be in regards to, uh, using those potentially. So with that, maybe I should move into those questions.
With just one-
Yeah, just one quick question. How hard would it be, I forget, it was either Councilmember Levison or Mayor Pratim Santos, uh, how hard would it be to actually just go back and carve out these items and find a spot for them in the general fund? On a scale from one to 10, if we said-
Talk about 540,000?
Yeah.
What we would need to do is find either re- uh, new revenues to cover it or else we're going to have to take something else out of the budget to replace it.
Right. So, but if, regardless, you're the guru, the numbers guru, on a scale from one to 10, if we said, you know what, we want you to go back and find the money, get that to zero, how bad would you hate us? Zero being, uh, you know, I hate you guys so much and 10 being, it's not a problem because I can handle this.
I'm, I'm not going to hate you, but the people behind me whose bud- budgets were going to-
No, no, I know. I, I just want, I just want to know.
It's not going to be easy. It's not going to be easy, but it, it can, it prob- possibly could be done, um, but it's not without potentially impacting some services.
Okay.
There's going to have to be a give and take in that discussion.
Okay. I, I just, I just want to know that, I mean-
You add this, you're, you're going to either have to increase revenue in some way?
Yeah. Or cut costs. I mean, it's on a national stage, nobody ever does it, so why don't we just start here locally? And I just want to know how hard it would be here locally and it sounds like it's possible but difficult.
I think that discussion isn't, as, as you look at this, and I think that's where when we hear the answers to some of these questions, that'll tell us frankly how difficult it's going to be. Because I think we moved through the process, we're looking at that now as it is.
That's the nicest way anyone's told me to shut up and let them ask the questions I've ever heard.
I think we need, I think we need the answer to some of those questions.
But we're looking at it now because of all those other challenges I mentioned, uh, what we need to try to fit into the budget of new expenses versus the fact that we have a limited amount of new revenues. So, you know, one thing I didn't talk, I meant, I intended to say about my sales tax projecting, I threw into the communication this time and back in April that a 3% increase this year and next would be 1.6 million dollars. It's not where my, my projections are falling right now, so we don't have 1.6 million dollars of new revenue. So just to show you, that's, so we got to wrestle with that as well. All those other things that we have to add to the budget, are they more important than this 540,000 dollars that you're asking us to try to get in there as well? So, all right. So the first question though, uh, would be about the parks and greenway maintenance fee. It expires at the end of the year.
To answer your question, depending on the answer to this, it could be a zero really quick because this just adds to the gap.
I think answers yes.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think we need to keep the parks and greenway maintenance fee. What do we have to do in order to do that?
The, uh, Mayor Coombs, that the parks and greenway maintenance fee is, is in the municipal code, expires at the end of the year, we're taking ordinance to continue it. So we would need some direction as to doing that in the length of time.
All right. Councilmember Levison?
You know, when we enacted this fee, um, I, I was not happy about it, but one of the things was that we would take a serious reassessment and, um, not just roll it over. And, um, you know, I think that, uh, even though that we're not going to have the master plan complete, completed in sufficient time to be part of the 2013 budget, um, there are people that, that, um, rigorously objected to this fee because it's a bit regressive on people of lower income, um, because it's a flat fee, no matter, you know, it's not a sliding scale. It's not like if you, you know, spend more money on your utility bill, that the fee goes as a percentage of the utility bill, it's a flat fee. Um, and I think that, uh, my, my simple answer is no, because we have to start looking at, um, actually staying within our means on parks and greenway maintenance, number one. Number two, um, the possibility could be to lower the fee and then see where we would have to raise, um, fees on, um, use of, by, by the users, basically to do some cost shift. So everybody who's, um, a member of the, the city, um, that uses a city facility, you know, would, would, uh, maybe pay a larger, um, share of that as opposed to the maintenance fee underpinning, um, the fee structure. So, you know, I guess my first answer is no, but maybe.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I remember when this came up, I was vehemently opposed to it. In fact, I think I voted against the budget that year. Um, I was a troublemaker. Apparently I still am. In some people's eyes. Um, I would be amine- amenable to having it extended for one year. An extension of one year. Cause I, yeah, I like to see things sunset. I like to, you know, live with, live within your means. Um, but, you know, that's a very large gap. We have a new city manager who's trying, who's apparently trying to reset the general fund budget. I'll give you a year, I'll, I'll give you a couple of years, but, uh, this one, uh, I would be willing to extend it one more year. It's a dollar. So, it's a dollar. One dollar. So, that's where I'm at on that one, I, you know, one year.
Councilmember Finley?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coombs. I, the only reason that I would want to see this, uh, renewed is because our parks and open spaces are basically funded by development and we're almost developed out. There are not going to be any more, a whole lot more, uh, parks fees paid by developers in order to maintain our parks. Um, we're going to have to look at a lot of new ways to fund our, our parks and, and they're a big asset of our community. I'm willing to pay a buck.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Um, I just think of, uh, what would happen if we're faced with the possibility of, for example, cutting the gap funding for winter sheltering needs. Um, what I read in between the lines from the city manager was-
Yeah.
If we don't pass this, um, and allow the parks and greenway maintenance fees to be included as a revenue source for 2013, it just basically doubles the problem that we have. Right? So I would, I think what we should do is in, in, put it out, let it keep coming in, a buck a month for everybody for a year or two, and then they can try to whittle down that 540,000. And once they've lost that half million dollar weight, then we can say, hey, let's go for another round. You can do it. You know? So, uh, diets suck, but we might want to think about it. But I don't think we should do it all at once.
Councilmember Samori?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm, I'm all in favor of, uh, extending the fee for one or two years would be fine. I find that it would be hard to determine who uses the parks more than others to be able to adjust the fees accordingly. And I agree with, uh, Councilmember Finley where, uh, developers, well, there isn't that much to be developed anymore. And even at those fees, we wouldn't be able to, uh, build or maintain the parks the way that we need to. One of the thoughts could be in this general fund, ongoing expenses with one-year commitment is to see if the, uh, senior Go Magazine, uh, the gap funding and the poverty could be funded out as CBDG fund perhaps, and that would alleviate some of the financial hardship. But, uh, absolutely, let's move forward with the extension for at least a year, if not two.
Larger budget picture based on some discussions that occurred earlier and looking at those other opportunities, you know, that's where we will kind of come in and say, what are the other potential revenue sources for these types of activities? And that's going to be part of the discussion as well. So we will look at that.
Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, the other, um, issue with these one-time fees is that we do devote a certain percentage of our budget for the human services in, um, the community. And so what we could do is simply, um, directs, we use, uh, is it 1.3 or 1.6 percent?
1.6.
1.6 percent of, uh, what's funded, um, general fund, um, funded goes to that. And so what we could do is just simply direct staff to use part of that 1.6 percent to cover the poverty initiative and the winter sheltering needs. And, um, and perhaps also look at, um, uh, you know, some of the other, um, maybe a couple of these other items could have partial funding through that as well. And I'm also thinking that, um, Councilmember Bagley, there are some of these issues that the reason they ended up on this list was for a particular reason, like we've, we've done with the one-time expenses where it didn't seem to fit anywhere else and there wasn't enough money to, in a budget, to add or cut this exact amount. And so it kind of got fudged because some of these, um, figures represent, um, wages and, um, number of hours people work, for example. So it, you know, it, it might be that, um, the bright eyes coordinator could also go underneath the, um, human service budget, um, that, part of that 1.6 percent. So, you know, we could take care of almost, um, uh, $200,000 of this money, um, under, uh, another section of the budget. But that would mean starting that with the Housing and Human Services Committee, um, being informed that we made that decision so that they, when they go out to the nonprofits to say how much money they have to give out, it's not a shock to the nonprofits to say, you know, we're going to start instead of basically the full 1.6 percent, we might be starting at 1.2. So, um, and you have to give people heads up on this because a lot of nonprofits connect, uh, uh, count on this funding year over year too.
Are we done with that first question then? Okay.
Do you need us to both or?
I think I got the correction. Second one is on the allocation of the 2% sales and use tax. Should we continue to maintain it as, and have the past three budgets at 88.3% for the general fund and 11.7% for the public improvement fund?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coombs. Uh, I know that sometimes, I know Gordon Pedro would hate it when I did this, but what do you think, Jim?
Mayor Coombs, Member Council, I, I gave you a large hint about that already earlier tonight, but I can repeat it again. The public improvement fund can withstand this another year because of the fund balance it has to carry over. So I think I may have already expressed my preference here, probably more than I probably should have.
So keep it.
Is that, is that a move?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm recommending. Since, since the guy who lives with the numbers kind of feels that way.
I agree. Councilmember Levison?
Yeah, well, I, I came up with another little scenario here in my notes. Um, I was, um, on, uh, page, um, 409, I guess, I don't know if it's 409 in the paper packet, it's 409 in the, um, the, uh, online packet. It's 417 of the paper packet. Um, so when we're, when we did that, um, shift out of the general fund, one time giving it to the public improvement fund, why not repay the general fund back for the 266,300 that was put into the PIF out of the excess budget projections? It might, what my thoughts were, it might be a more realistic to track or compare that to the 88-12, well, I, I'm calling it 88-12, but it's actually 88-something, 11-something split. If we're going to, um, ship, if we can ship those dollars back to the general fund, the one-time dollars could increase by 266,300.
Mayor Coombs, Members of Council-
Not too fast.
No, well, he, not in my mind. So it was, um, so in a way, I looked at it that we were repaying the public improvement fund the past two years for the fact that this allocation has been higher towards the general fund than typically in the past. And that's how we've been proposing it to you in those past two budgets on how to try to make that public improvement fund somewhat closer to, um, whole or as it was before. So, um, you know, we're not booking any kind of loan repayment between these two funds. Uh, we never recognized it that way. We just, uh, we're transferring funds balance based on direction. Um, so-
But I'm just wondering, you know, how, how did it get us as far as our 80, you know, the split that we said? What was the, I guess I, I could have gotten my calculator out and I didn't have one available. You know, how, how close did it, that shift of the 266,300, when we shifted into the PIF, get us to be, um, better towards the-
So it's worth $950,000 is the whole difference-
Okay.
-in 2012.
Okay. So it got us about a third of the way there?
Not even.
Not quite. Okay. All righty. Well, I, I guess, um-
But in addition-
Yeah.
-the policy that directs more of the use tax towards the public improvement fund because of the, a, a couple of strong years has been able to give that public improvement fund additional fund- fund additional funding, pushing it towards the, the level of dollars that would be generated at, at the 0.15%. 15% I guess.
Right. Right. And, and I guess that, I'd like, I guess the, my goal with the public improvement fund is that, um, we reach the, um, the goals that, that we've, um, stated previously to, first of all, make sure we have our debt service paid and then, um, making sure that, um, the most critical infrastructure needs are met first. And, I mean, I, you know, when I'm looking at the, the PIF, yeah, I'm not so sure when we were doing the CIP last year whether or not we really needed to build 10 more tennis courts, you know, at the cost of a million dollars out at the, the rec center. I mean, to me, it's nice to have the tennis courts, but again, if we've got ongoing, um, parks and greenways, maintenance issues, um, you know, that, that would have freed us up with some money to, um, look at addressing maintenance issues of things that were already built rather than, um, you know, build more. So, I, I guess that's another issue that we're going to have to struggle with when that, um, we're looking at the, uh, the parks and, and greenway master plan coming forward.
Mayor Coombs, that the, um, the tennis courts were built out of the park improvement fund, not the public improvement fund?
Sorry. Councilmember Santos?
Yeah, it's important to get those fun, fun, you know.
The improvement fund.
Yeah, they're, they're close. Um, you know, I, I recall when this was, was it 85-15? I'd like to see it back at 85-15 eventually, so I'm fine with leaving it the way it is for this, this year.
Councilmember Samori.
I'll make it quick. Keep it the way that it is.
Okay. Should we move on?
Yep.
Okay. Next question is, um, if sufficient ongoing revenues are not available, should these ongoing expenses with one-year commitment be funded at all in 2013? So, um, it's whether we should continue them or not is the question. I, I already have the, the sense that we are trying to move those into ongoing expenses if possible, but if we can't, what then?
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Um, I think that what we should do is if we don't have the money and it's not available, I think that any ongoing expense on that list shouldn't be funded. However, um, I think that we should attempt to find it elsewhere. So I don't think we should cut, for example, our, our winter sheltering needs or, uh, the, uh, poverty initiative, or I think what we should do is just say, if we don't have the money, we don't do it, but then again, at the same time, find the money. And then leave the loophole there that if, if there's a problem, you come back and we talk about it and we say, you know, we really can't do this, but try your best.
And fundamentally potentially weigh it against something else where we, the value of this versus.
Yeah.
Versus B.
You know, I mean, maybe we don't, uh, maybe we, uh, please Paul Tiger and we don't trim our trees and, uh, at the same time, but maybe we do take care of our winter sheltering needs. So, that's what I'd recommend.
Do something that's kind of in between the two extremes where maybe you try to get 50% of the way. It's like going on a diet, you don't want to go on a crash diet and not eat for two months and, uh, get there at once, but maybe to go baby steps and try to get there as a goal to go get 50% and then, you know, over a two-year period, get it down to. That's my, my thoughts.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think diets work great personally. Um, that's right. So, I think there are options. CBDG funds could be used for some of these, um, activities, but what we need to really do is set priorities too. Which of these are the most important for us to continue to fund? And could we fund them at the rates that we have or do we need to cut them back 25% or 50%, et cetera? But without having, you know, real numbers, it's hard to say. But I think they're all worthy causes. We just need to be able to figure out how much we can do. And we can't be everything to everybody. None of us can.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Some of us are better at it than others. I'm, I kind of feel like Councilmember Bagley does. I find, find money for these in your, uh, regular budget, and if you can't, then let's look at the whole picture and find out what we want to cut. You know, if, if, uh, we can't fit all these things into the regular budget, then let's look at that section of the budget and find out which things we need to cut in order to make it work. I agree, we don't need to have, uh, half a million dollars of one, you know, one-year commitment of these things. That's just, that's nonsense.
Councilmember Levinson.
Um, I know we're talking about CDGB, CDGB money. However, CDVG money is not just the, the go-to slush fund. Um, CDVG, as Kathy Federer has mentioned, has some pretty narrow restrictions for spending. And so before we get away with thinking that, um, something can be, um, used with CDVG money, we've already established that budget for, um, 2013. And, um, we'd really have to go back and, and review whether or not these, any of these, um, items would fit within that. And, and my feeling is if they would have fit before, we probably would have gone to that source, or at least part of it.
Councilmember Santos?
Um, I don't think so. Um, having talked, Harold, I've had a couple of conversations about the use of CDVG, so I'll let him chime in.
So historically, in terms of, of what I've seen in other organizations and how I've utilized it, um, I've actually seen it used for code enforcement. In terms of the code enforcement activities that are conducted in that area, I've seen it used for seal coding programs that occur within CDVG activity. It has to, the activity has to actually occur within the designated areas, and so you are restricted in, in that way. Um, but, but I have seen it used in multiple ways, but it has to be used for the designated areas. If you move outside of it, then you have a different issue. The other thing that I think we have to be very careful of when we look at CDVG funds is just really what's happened historically at the national level and, and how those funds have been cut. I think because we're in an election year, um, and I've kind of heard this in different locations recently, um, we tend to see those dollars stabilize a little bit, but then what happens is, is the year after the election year, you tend to start seeing changes. And, and so if you look at the historical trend in terms of CDVG dollars, it's been going down. So, we need to, we need to look at all avenues that we have available, but I think, I wanted to throw that out there to say, I think you can, but then you have to balance it against what you're doing and then balance it against what, what do you really forecast that revenue stream to be like in the future? Um, so we will look at all facets of that activity.
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I know with CDVG, we haven't really done this before, but, um, other cities have used CDVG funds to, um, support, um, uh, childcare reimbursement, not reimbursements, to pay for childcare for, um, families that, um, it could be that families in the poverty program could have childcare expenses, um, uh, filled in with some CDVG money as far as, um, and then that would be able to diminish the other childcare, um, allocation, uh, part of that budget too. So that'll free up some money, um, maybe somewhere else. But I, I think we have to be, um, cognizant of the fact that we could get caught the next year with not, with having shifted it that way and then not having those funds available any longer and then having to go back and, and re-stress the budget and maybe we'll end up with some one-time expense because we're actually compensating for CDVG money that's no longer there to pay for childcare, to pay for weatherization for, um, people that fall in that income category or in the revitalization projects, that sort of use of funds. So we have to be pretty diligent about getting the best bang for our buck. And if it's a way that we can help out these other, um, gap issues, maybe we should have a little flexibility in mind in the future.
I think you got the tone there. If not, the answer. Next question. Paying, if a pay increase is necessary to reach the market ranges of pay, should one be added to the 2013 budget even if to do so would require a reduction in services, which we would determine how to, what to reduce through the use of the prioritization results? So, should we be paying market ranges at any cost?
Who wants to touch this? Councilmember Bagley.
Um, I move that Harold Dominguez receives nothing. He earns one dollar for the, no, just kidding. Um, I'd be curious to know, I mean, in my business, when these things come up, I sit down with my employees, the people I work with and say, what do you think? Here's where we're at. You know, in good years, we all win, in bad years, we all lose, you know? And so I'd be curious to know before I answer this one, I'd just like to know the tone of staff. You know, we're all in this together, and so I'm just curious as to, I mean, you guys work with the budget, you guys work with your salaries, you guys live it every day, and I know that when times are lean, the right people say, you know what, let's tighten up our belt straps, but at the same, you know, bootstraps in our belts. And, but at the same time, when it's Fat City, people get upset when, uh, they're not sharing in the success. So I'm curious as, I'm just curious as what, if we were to, if we, just what's the tenure right now? What's the, or the tenor right now? What's the, what's the feeling on staff? How, what would, what would they say if we said no and what would they say if we said yes?
Uh, Mayor Coombs, I'm in collective bargaining negotiations. I'm not allowed to speak about them right now. Maybe you might want to address this.
Uh, um, it's, I'm partially associated, so I'm gonna, but I'm gonna talk in general terms of, about municipal government. I think one of the things that you find in municipal government is that it, this is not an uncommon discussion. And, and so what you, you really fundamentally find out is that year over year, it's 1%, it's 2%, it's not a lot. I think what you have to balance in that discussion is really where we are from a competitive standpoint in terms of getting the right employees. I, you know, what I will say based on your question is, I think the answer to this is embedded in the other questions that we've asked you on in terms of how we need to do this and what we need to look at in terms of what are our core services? What are we doing? Um, how do we need to look at, are we trying to be everything to everyone? If we are, do we need to be? And I think that will lead us into, to this answer, um, as, as we move through the budget process because, um, what we're saying is, is is salary, is salary of employees important?
Yes. I'd be willing to say yes.
So i- if it is, are we willing to look at the entirety of the budget to really manage this issue? And I think that's the question.
I guess, I'm gonna weigh in on this. That is the question, and I, what I, what I can add to it, you know, non-collectively bargained employees, uh, in the, in the past three budgets, uh, we've given a zero and a 1% and a 1%, so 2% over the past three years. To those who are at marketer above, there's a lot of moving parts in our pay plan, but in general, those, that's been our pay change for those type of employees in the past three years. Now, your question about, you know, them, when times are tough, do you, um, are they sharing in this? You know, the market is, we're trying to still track with the market, and the market moves a lot slower when times are tough. And we haven't fallen way beyond the market. What we're trying to do is keep with it. I think we're doing a pretty good job of it. The hardest part we have right now is projecting what others may be doing. Uh, so we know where we are in comparison to this year's market, but what's everyone going to do next year? And that's just a game that, that you don't know the answer to until after you've already played your hand, so.
As fundamentally, I believe we should be paying city employees market rates, but that should also include a pretty detailed analysis of all of the compensation, the health and, you know, because we have pretty good benefits here. And so if we're trying to compare apples with oranges, we need to make sure that we're doing those market comparisons correctly. But fundamentally, I believe in the philosophy of paying market prices for, um, for employees, and that's, you know, my fundamental belief. And if we have to cut, you know, lay people off to keep, uh, some, some people at market rates or cut services, but.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, I believe people should be, get, get a fair wage for their talent and experience. However, if you don't have the funds, if you don't have the revenues, you may have somebody that's very talented and very experienced, but you don't have the money to pay them. And I think the employees of the city of Longmont in the past have experienced that where we didn't have the funds to pay. And most of them, I believe, were willing to stick around and not get a raise because, uh, we do offer some good benefits and because we did have loyal employees. Um, so, it's, it's hard to say. I don't think that the citizens of Longmont would be appreciative if you cut critical services and funded, uh, pay raises for employees or if you were supporting, uh, services that in their eyes, they feel aren't absolutely necessary or mandatory by the city to provide. So, in order to be fair, and, and the negotiations that are occurring with, um, some of the union members, they have to understand that if we don't have the money to pay it, we don't have the money to pay it. Just because the contract says that we have to or that they get to negotiate doesn't mean that they get everything that they want and nor, uh, and we may even have to cut salaries of employees and we may have to cut services on top of it. So, again, as we go through the budget and we get some, you know, hardcore numbers, we can make better decisions and, uh, hopefully that gives you an idea of where we might be coming from.
Councilmember Levinson.
So, our organization is a, a service organization and mostly driven by people. Um, I think one of the reasons, you know, loyalty only gets you so much towards an organization. I think, um, the employees in the city, um, maybe go that extra yard because, um, they are happy because they're compensated and they feel that they're compensated, you know, fairly for the market. And I think that the other thing to, um, remember is that when, when people feel that they're being supported, um, with a fair wage, they do go out of their way to work hard and, um, provide that extra, um, level of, of service that we hear compliments about constantly. Plus, you know, uh, that helps, that helps retain people. Also, our employees, if they get a raise, they live in the community, they go out and spend money. We get a piece of every bit of a raise somebody gets. The last factor is that the employees, um, had to make additional contributions at a higher level to their health insurance. And so even if there was a raise, um, some of that pay increase is going to go directly into any increase in, um, health insurance premiums that they would be, um, absorbing because of, uh, the fact that we can't, you know, pay for every bit of the, the increase, that that burden is being shifted a little bit onto the, um, employees. So, I, you know, I would be in favor of making sure that we keep things at market rate. And then, um, if, um, we have, um, the ability to give people a raise, people, um, uh, you know, weighted out 0% and 1%, um, if we can do it, I think that it's, um, it's good for our employees to feel that, um, if, if we can give a raise, that we do, that we don't just say, well, maybe we can keep everybody happy by not giving them anything at all. I, I think you just get extraordinary, um, service and dedication of people when they feel that they're, um, that they've been rewarded maybe for those couple of lean years and to have just basically, we're not talking about 2% or 3%, and we're not Scranton, Pennsylvania, where we're going to turn around and hand everybody minimum wage. So, um, you know, I, I think that, you know, the people are the most important part of the organization right now, and, and that's, um, how we're going to continue to be, um, a, a very excellent city.
Councilmember Santos?
If you can't afford it, you can't afford it. You know, I like to have people at market rate, but if, if we're going to do that for what the mayor and Councilmember Levinson are suggesting, which member of staff are you going to cut? Which ones are you going to lay off? Is it Bobby? Rigo? Dan Wolford's over there. Dale? Andy?
Tell her to write the names, Jim.
Jim? You know, I, I think what we need- You know, I, I think what we need is a little bit more information. You know, I, I find it interesting in government, everyone expects a pay raise. It's not how it's done in real life. You work out in, 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 in whatever private entity, not everyone gets a raise every year. You know, when I worked in the, in the hotel industry as a front desk clerk, I got a raise, uh, I had a dollar raise after three years. Wow. Bad, you know, wasn't a great economy, you know? I'm, I have my own business now. Do I get a pay raise? No. Um, you know, and with collective bargaining, both units, fire and police, in the years that we, they saw we couldn't give a increase, they understood it, they saw it, you know? Jim has, and the staff, finance staff has been very good about laying out, here are the books, here's the reality, and they've been able to see it and said, "You know what? We understand. We'll, we'll talk about it next year." That's why we have one year, we've had a couple of one-year contracts. I'm not willing to lay anybody off. We did furloughs once, I'll never do them again. Um, you know, i- i- if you wanna keep people at market rate, and I understand, counselmember Levinson, that, that people are looking to, they feel rewarded by getting a pay increase, but sometimes also people feel rewarded by the job that they actually do for the community that they live in. You know, I'd love to be able to give everyone a, a pay increase now. If it's, if it's possible, yes. It's not gonna throw us, we gotta, you know, cut Teresa and other people. No, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go down that path. I, I think what I'd like to see is more sta, and staff has done this very well, cross-trained in several different areas, and, and, you know, this department helping that department, and that department helping this department, and, and whether it's Rhythm on the River or whatever functions that we have, I, I think that's, that not only builds camaraderie amongst the employees, but shows that the community, that staff of other departments, it, it just doesn't have to be rec. It just doesn't have to be public works and natural resources. You know, I see Bobby's here, so, you know, I'm looking forward to getting, if we're relatively at market rate, and if we can, if we can't afford it, then we don't. You know, but just to say, "Yeah, let's keep everybody at market rate, and we, we're gonna fire or lay off somebody," we're gonna lay off somebody in this economy? Really?
Counselmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And just for record, we're all talking, because we just don't wanna talk about fracking. The, I, I guess, I, I guess I reject the question as I hear the comments. I reject the question. I don't know how the pay scale works for the city of Longmont, but I don't think it's all or nothing. And what I mean by that is that it's not, well, we either all get an increase or we don't. People always say that people are your most important asset. That's wrong. The right people are your most important asset. The wrong people are the biggest liability ever. And so, when you're looking at giving everybody an increase, you're giving both the right people, the wrong people, and the mediocre people. And so, I guess I would encourage Harold, our new city leader, to, to figure out who the right people are and pay them whatever it takes to keep them. Figure out who the wrong people are, and then don't pay them anything. And then, but the data, you know, I sometime teach at the University of Colorado, up at the Leeds School, and I've been known to conduct research in this area a time or two, but the research shows that the right people in general actually earn slightly less. Now, that doesn't mean that you go out and you pay less to the right people because you're gonna screw them, and, no. What it means is that people work for organizations for different reasons. And people who share the same passion, people who love who they work with, love what they do, you know, hmm, maybe I will take a 10% pay cut because I'm not miserable in my job. And so, I'm not saying that, no, we should be 10% below market rate. I'm all for market rate. But I just don't think it's as easy as saying, do we give everybody a pay increase to make it all at market level? I think there are sub-questions, like, do we have the right people on board the bus? Are they in the right seats? What do we need to do to get rid of the wrong people? And in general, you know, how do we, we need to be thinking beyond just, do we give everybody a raise or not? And so, I guess I would encourage our city manager to do what managers do, which is spend your time figuring out, how do we get the right people? What do we need to pay them to keep them and attract them? And then, just manage. So, I reject the question.
Mayor Coombs, member of council, just to clarify, and we, we do have a pay-for-performance system, and typically, you know, I'm just presenting you information now based on what a 1% increase would cost, and so, those folks who don't deserve a pay increase typically don't get a pay increase, but we understand your thoughts there. If there's nothing else on that question, then I'm just going to ask if there's any further direction as we go forward with our budget process.
Counselmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess if counselmember Bagley rejects the question, I will embrace the question. And I think he started off by quoting something out of, I think, chapter two of Good to Great. Yes. Again, counselmember Santos stated it very well. In the real world, if companies are not generating the revenue and they don't have the money to pay people, they either lay them off or they take pay cuts, and it should be no different in the city environment. And we, we shouldn't be afraid of doing it or embarrassed about doing it, it's just a fact of life. I mean, would you rather have a job and earn 10% less, or would you not have a job and spend three, four years looking for one nowadays?
Counselmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'll keep it short. I agree. You know, pay the people who are worth it more money and pay the ones, or don't pay the ones who aren't worth it, and don't spend money you don't have. That's what business does, and I think we should operate more in that regard.
You know, kind of my thoughts were, you know, this is not an all-or-nothing thing. Let's say you've got somebody that's really talented in the LPC department, that's very got, you know, unique engineering skills, he's very, very marketable, and other utilities could suck him away and pay, you know, 15% more. Maybe it's cheaper for us to pay that one individual, you know, what he's worth if we have to, because to replace him might cost us a lot more money. So, that's kind of my thoughts on, you know, it's, it's like what counselmember Bagley was saying, it's, you know, the key people on the right seats of the bus, it's, it's real important, so.
Counselmember Levinson.
So, my, my final comments are that, you know, number six, when you're asking us about, you know, any of the directions about the previous directions you've asked us to give you cannot be accomplished with, within the ongoing revenues and service reductions made. I, I think that question might be a little bit premature to ask us at this point, just because from what I'm hearing of everybody else and, and, you know, how my thoughts have evolved hearing the conversation, is that a lot of it, it's gonna depend on what the individual, what the situation, unique situation is, as far as how we can juggle things around. So, my request would be, you know, if you have questions as the budget is being developed, that you need another tweak in direction, I'd rather not have big shifts in the budget when we get to discussing the budget, but I'd rather have direction given in small incremental steps if that's, if there's a question, it might just be that, you know, we, we do something during city manager's report, or, you know, we, we maybe just send you a list of what priorities, or you send us a Survey Monkey, and we can, you know, give you feedback through a Survey Monkey survey.
That's exactly, I think, the way we're gonna move through this, is the level of interaction's gonna start increasing a- as we move through this process, and when we see different issues, and frankly, Jim giving, Jim giving you his thoughts, and then I'm giving you my thoughts as we're moving through, so, you know, that's the way we're gonna move from here on out.
Counselmember Santos.
Thank you. I mentioned them earlier, I'm, I'll mention them now. If we can reduce the credit card fees that we're absorbing, I think that's just ridiculous. You wanna use them? You pay, you, you pay the fee. So, that's one thing I'd like to see done. I'd like to see all the boards and commissions go paperless. I'd also like to see, again, as I mentioned earlier about Rhythm on the River sponsorships, I, I think, again, we have three breweries in this community, and it's a family event, yes, I know, and I, I know some members of staff don't like it, but I've been to many city events around the nation, and there's, they've always had some sort of alcohol involved. And I'm not saying I want people having drunken parties out in, in Rogers Grove, you know, you can do it, you can do it well. We, it's a free event, but it's, it's free to the public, but in, in the end, they're paying for it. So, why not go after some sponsorships? And, and not only with that, with Rhythm on the River, Festival in Maine, I mean, you name it, there are small and big companies that would love to be able to say, you know, that they, they helped sponsor a, a city event. I, I think, I think that would be key as far as some, of getting some of our expenses down. Those are, those are several, several things that I'd like to see in this coming year's budget.
Counselmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would be opposed to the paperless system, just because it might save money, but I, 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 I'm just a tactile person. I, I carry my packet, I, I just need it, I mark it up. Oh, I know, but then again, we'd be requiring city staff and whatnot to print. I know, but what I'm saying is that that's a burden and a cost on, on staff. And anyway, I want my packet on paper. Please.
Counsel. Counselmember Samori.
Bless you. Counselmember Santos, were you eavesdropping on a conversation that Jim and I and Kim had this afternoon about sponsorships for events and beer at events? Are you sure?
Yes, I'd like to point out to councilmembers that we did interview somebody last week for a, a city board that is not on the internet and does not do email and electronic communications. I also think that, you know, with the digital divide issues that we have in this community, it could actually, going paperless, be an impediment on somebody that might wanna participate in a border commission or even a, a city task force to not have the ability, or be embarrassed about, you know, having to own up that they don't have the money to pay for, you know, a service that all of us take as a normal part of, of, of modern life.
Counselmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. We print way too much. I just found out we have paperless utility billing just yesterday, and I was gonna mention that in council comments. First I got back in here, I, I heard that in this room during those budget talks, got my accountant number from, from staff, went on my own personal phone, and signed up for paperless billing. I do recall that we still have a library in the city of Longmont, unless that has changed, counselmember Levinson, and we have many multiple computers that are in there. We have computers at the senior center that we have classes for seniors to be able to take to learn how to use the internet and how to use email. We have Comcast does do digital divide. I don't think we're leaving anyone out. There are ways around it. Counselmember Bagley, I, I think all members of council should, should be paperless. In fact, you know, Sandy, when I first thought about this, going paperless, it was what? 1,500, $2,000 a year in printing costs for one council member? Is that right?
Yes. Yes. My packet?
Yeah.
Hollow paper. We can save $0.50,000.
2,000 a year per council member. So, I mean, there, there are, there are boards and commissions that need, you know, maps, planning and zoning, I get that. We, we, if, if those are needed, great, I, I understand that, and in fact, I asked for it. I asked for the budget. You know, I'm not, I'm not gonna read thousands and thousands of pages paperless, you know, I, I, I get that, there are exceptions to the rule, but if we can save money and staff time, and you can use multiple areas, and I, I can't think of a person that I don't know that doesn't have a computer where I can say, "Hey, can I borrow your computer for a little bit? You wanna print out a packet? Print it on your own paper." Why are we fitting the cost for that? I understand that we're asking for volunteers, but there's ways to do that. I could look up a packet on a phone. Come on. So.
Counselmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I, I guess, I, I have the same debate with my office employees, and there is an opportunity cost. Let's suppose for a second that I missed something in my packet because I am a tactile person, and the fracking rigs fail. Or, let's suppose I missed something in my packet that results in a bigger expense or cost to the city. And so, I'm all for recycling, I'm all for doing what we can to save the environment, save on costs, it's just that some people are indifferent. And by making people print out their packet, I'm not printing this out every week, you know, and I don't think city staff would wanna print out stuff every week, maybe going paperless, but with the option for those of us who are slower with the digital stuff, maybe give them the option to get their, their packet.
Give you a year.
With a year? Okay. Or, or maybe we should table this for another day since it's getting late, and we're coming up at 11:00, and it'd be a real shame not to go past.
It wasn't a motion, just suggestions.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Let's take a break, a five-minute break, maybe a 10-minute break. Let's take a, a break, a five-minute break, maybe a ten-minute break. Well, I guess I don't wanna stay up here forever, so let's continue, let's come back to order.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, we have some board appointments, we'll try to make them pretty quick. There's some ballots on your desk. The first one is for the Longmont Downtown Development Authority. We have two regular members, three people, vote for two, please. LDDA, vote for two, please. Councilmember Samori voted for Robert Goff, then Larry Stoss. Bagley voted for Goff and Stoss. Levinson voted for Goff and Anne Smith. Santos for Goff and Larry Stoss. Finley for Anne Smith and Larry Stoss. And Coombs for Goff and Stoss. So, Robert Goff and Larry Stoss will get the two regular member terms on the LDDA. Library, and they both end on the same time, so library board, there's one unexpired term for two sixteen, so vote for one individual.
Why do I have two, two days of ballots for the library?
In case you can't, in case you have to re-vote.
No, I have two. I have four.
Well, in case it takes four votes, so. Councilmember Bagley voted for Katie Fuller. Finley voted for Ron Norman. Coombs voted for Strider Benston. Levinson voted for Katie Fuller. Santos voted for Ron Norman. And Samori voted for Carrie Autry. So, we don't have a majority for anybody? Excuse me?
Carrie was through. I got a message, she was through.
Um, I hadn't heard that, so. Who, did you get the message from someone on my staff? Which I have two people out this week, so.
I might, I don't know, I thought maybe he was done.
Well, Katie Fuller and Ron Norman both got two votes, and the other two got one, so we could eliminate the, the two lowest vote-getters. Which means you should vote for either Katie Fuller or Ron Norman. Council, Santos voted for Ron Norman. Levinson voted for Katie Fuller. Coombs voted for Katie Fuller. Bagley voted for Katie Fuller. Samori voted for Katie Fuller. And Finley voted for Ron Norman. So, it looks like Katie Fuller got four votes, and she will get the, the position on the library advisory board. Museum advisory board, we have two terms, so vote for two of those three individuals. And then we'll have a motion at the end for who gets which term. Samori voted for William Hazel and Shelley Mortson. Finley voted for Richard Calamaya, I'm gonna have to take lessons on these names, and Shelley Mortson, Morstan. Coombs voted for Hazel and Morstan. Santos voted for Calamaya and Morstan. Levinson voted for Hazel and Calamaya. And Bagley voted for Calamaya and Morstan. Which means Richard Calamaya and Shelley Morstan got four votes each, so they will get the positions. We just need a motion on who gets the longer term. I, I move that Calamaya gets the longer term.
All right, shall we vote on that?
Okay, thank you. The la- um, the next one is the money accumulation pension board, we have two, so vote for one of those individuals. Levinson voted for Wagner. Coombs voted for Wagner. Bagley voted for Barth. Finley voted for Wagner. Samori voted for Barth. And Santos voted for Barth. So, we have a tie. I think we have one more ballot there.
Yeah.
So, I don't know. You might end up with the same result if you don't.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Uh, I know Tim Barth, that's the only reason I voted for him. So, my question is, um, uh, as you all know, I was unable to make the interviews this afternoon, I got delayed in court. Any comments on Mr. Wagner?
Well, the, the, one of the reasons why, I thought they're both very capable and, and both do a great job. I mean, Greg Wagner's been on the board and wants to continue on the board. Tim Barth did mention that he didn't feel comfortable, perhaps, you know, taking Greg Wagner's spot. He originally signed up for this thinking there was two spots open, so, um, that's why I voted for, for Greg, just because, uh, Tim wasn't really hard over on having that spot if it meant displacing Greg Wagner.
I'll change my vote then. I mean, I'm gonna change my vote then. We have to vote again, but... Does anyone, is anyone opposed to me just changing my vote, and Wagner gets it? I change my vote.
All right.
So, the last one's planning and zoning commission, you have one applicant for that regular term. All we need is a motion if you want to appoint Josh Goldberg.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move that we appoint Josh Goldberg to the regular, um, member to the planning and zoning board.
All right, let's vote.
Thank you.
Councilmembers Levinson?
Thank you, Mayor. The other thing is, can we direct staff to advertise for alternates for planning and zoning? Because Mr. Goldberg was an alternate, and he frequently, he served three times in the last seven months. So, I would direct staff to advertise for an alternate for planning and zoning, and if we have any other alternate positions that are open, any of those two. And then I would also like to move that we extend the meeting past eleven o'clock.
Okay. Which one?
If we don't go past the ele- I'm sorry.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. If we don't go past eleven o'clock, we don't have to put up with a week of hell, as we hear from KOGA and the public, et cetera, and we can just all get this over next week. Just my thought.
We have two, two motions, so let's deal with the first motion.
That's not a motion.
No, no, but, but Sarah had two.
I have a question, right?
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Valerie, since now Joshua Goldberg is a member, full, regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, we advertise anyway for the alternate position. You're gonna do that anyway?
Generally, we check with the board, and if it's an alternate position, we'll wait until there's a regular position. there's a regular position open for some other board stuff, because it's pretty costly to advertise. So, we'll check with the board and see if they feel like they need to have that filled immediately, is what we generally do.
So, I guess the motion would be just to extend the meeting.
Councilmember Santos?
If we do not extend the meeting, we end. There's no public invited to be heard. There's no council, there's no council comments. There's no city manager, city attorney. Just want everyone to be aware of that.
So, voting to extend the meeting, correct?
Yeah. We're voting to extend the meeting.
It passes five to one with Councilmember Bagley descending and Councilmember Witt absent.
Mayor Coombs, your last item is the oil and gas regulations, draft oil and gas regulations, and Brian Schumacher is here to make a presentation.
Would council like a presentation? All right, I'll be brief. Brian Schumacher with Economic Development. So, we're here this evening to get direction from council with respect to the draft oil and gas regulations that were tabled by council on May 22nd on second reading. And, um, in your packet, obviously, was the tabled version of the regulations as well as a copy of redline version that Councilmember Bagley provided for council's discussion and consideration. So, there's several options that are outlined in the communication. One would be to direct staff to bring back either the tabled versions, the version that's presented by Councilman Bagley, or another modified version of the regulations for consideration next week, on July 17th. Or the final option would be to direct staff not to schedule draft regulations for consideration next week. So, that's some brief remarks. I'll turn it back over to council.
Councilmember Finley?
I would move that we bring back Councilmember Bagley's redline version next week and go through it section by section, and approve it by section rather than as a whole.
Councilmember Bagley?
I'm gonna let Councilmember Levison say whatever she's gonna say.
Councilmember Levison?
I would prefer, let's, especially since, thinking of Councilmember Witt, who might be watching us on the web, I'm thinking of her, that I think the best of use of our time tonight, instead of, um, looking at doing adjustments next week, is to go through things right now and just get it over with, and see, um, what we have that we could have staff give us as a, um, a copy that we would be considering for passage next week on the 17th, and that way we have time to digest it. And, um, Councilmember Bagley and I have had a conversation around some things that I think we should adjust in his suggestions. So, um, I just think that it might be better if we just go through it right now and do the brain damage, and, um, I think that the, uh, the time is in our favor, because we don't want to do brain damage too much longer.
Councilmember Bagley?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess, uh, not ignoring your motion, but letting it just kind of hang out there for a second, Councilmember Finley. Um, first of all, if anybody got the impression that I kind of just took over this process, that wasn't my intention, so I apologize for unilaterally providing some feedback. Um, my whole point in providing the redline version was simply about 45 days ago, um, we decided to table things, and I started thinking about just simply, okay, well, where do we need to turn to get those four votes? And so, uh, I was looking for an opportunity to find a fourth vote. That's it. Um, and in so doing, um, to me, there are a couple of important points that I think it would be a shame if we were to sacrifice. Um, one is the residential prohibition, which in a nutshell is basically keeping Longmont in a situation where we determine whether or not something's residential, or heavy industrial, or light industrial, or commercial. And the other one is the quasi-fast track mingled with the compromise of getting industrial activities away from homes and schools. So, uh, keeping that in mind, I thought, okay, well, where's the heartburn? And so, uh, if you actually go through the redline, the first one was the preamble. I know that that's a hot button for both sides. If you take it out, um, people get upset that, oh, my gosh, we're giving up ground saying that fracking is, uh, is a good thing. It's not dangerous. And if we keep it in, we're saying, oh, my gosh, we're saying that fracking is dangerous. It's a bad thing. So, basically, by having all these details, my thought was, let's take out the details and just put in a general preamble. The other thing is that instead of focusing the preamble on oil and gas activities, I wanted to make it clear that it's just industrial activities. We're not picking on the oil and gas industry. Uh, just in general, industrial activities don't belong in residential areas. And I was not planning on the preamble that I provided as feedback is appearing on the front page of the local paper, but, uh, oh, well, it did. I'll stand by my work. Um, so that was the first change, the preamble. Um, the other thing is that you'll notice on page five, line three, when I put in there, um, "The proposed amendments to the city's 12-year-old oil and gas regulations are intended to allow and encourage responsible oil and gas development." It wasn't to allow and encourage, it was to allow, but do it responsibly. That is, that was the point of that change. Page six, uh, "The change of, 'The city has a recognized traditional authority and responsibility to regulate land use within its jurisdiction and to provide for the orderly development and protection of the community.'" I don't want to get in a fight with the state. Again, this is not about just oil and gas. It's about industrial activities and home rule authority to determine what land use shall be for a city, which is why I struck including oil and gas drilling. On page seven, um, the reason I put in there, if you look at line 11 and 12, um, those changes, um, just basically paragraph B, um, if you'll, if you'll notice, starting in number 10, or actually, number nine, "These standards are not intended to supersede state or federal laws, regulations, or rules pertaining to oil and gas development, but rather are meant to supplement those requirements where appropriate." So, previously, we're talking about supplementing, but legally, when we're dealing with preemption, uh, if the state doesn't address it, then local municipalities have the opportunity to regulate it and to address it. And as much as the Attorney General or the industry want us to believe otherwise, um, right now, oil and gas law is up in the air, and the only way it will be fixed is if the state fixes it, or makes it law, or if local municipalities put it in the form of a regulation to make it law, or if people go to court and the judicial system says this is or is not allowed, case law rather than statute. So, that is why I put that in there. Um, again, on page seven, another, a lot of the heartburn, um, and a lot of the, I think, the legal quagmire comes in trying to reg, yeah, I am, I am of the belief that underneath Longmont belongs to Longmont. However, by putting that in our regs, what happens when you have drilling occurring in Firestone, Weld County, Boulder, et cetera, and you've got multiple jurisdictions? So, I just took it out, meaning that it's impossible to regulate something outside our city limits. We already can regulate what goes on in Longmont on or below the surface, but this way it just gets rid of the possibility that, you know, if there's a well outside Longmont, we're telling people that we're gonna stick our nose in their business. So, I took that out. Um, next, typo on page eight, a couple of them. See here, uh, I did recommend that we take out the indemnification clause, page 20, starting with line five through page 21, line two, um, but I said stick it back in, because nobody seemed to care, and it's what the city does anyway.
So, that's back in?
Yeah, yeah, so it was... The what? Did I miss 16 and 17? Ah, yes. So, on page 16, um, "Transfer permits," line 22, specifically the change in line 24. Um, on one hand, you don't want, uh, top operating selling their well to me, and I don't know anything about the industry, but at the same time, if top operating wants to sell their property interests and their wells to somebody like Encana, um, the way it read previously is that the city, it kind of smacked like we could get in the way. Um, some people don't like the term unreasonably, but that's just a legal term of art that is often used in contract language that basically just says, you know, you, you, it's gonna happen unless you have a good reason why it shouldn't. So, uh, restraining the alienability of property and saying who can and cannot transfer private property rights, it's a heartburn for a lot of people. And so, this way, it's just making it clear that if somebody owns subsurface mineral rights or wells, they can still sell that. And the only way the city can step in and not transfer the permit is for really good reason. Um, page 17, um, I didn't really understand what it means to, on page, uh, line 10, "Are intended to protect the integrity of the surface estate and subsurface resources." I think what everybody's really talking about are property rights and property values, so I made that clear. Thank you, Councilmember Levison, for pointing out that jump in my changes. Uh, page 30, I struck, not because it's not good, but I just thought it was overly vague. And again, I'm trying to avoid a lawsuit as much as everybody else. Um, and it says, line 13, page 30, "Oil and gas well operations are prohibited from causing airborne emissions and concentrations that are known to cause negative health impacts." Um, I think that's just, uh, legal quagmire that we don't want to go down, meaning that anything, any type of airborne emissions in any concentrations could technically be argued to have some type of negative health impact on people close, far away from the well, et cetera. So, uh, we're already, um, regulated in that area, so I just said, let's take it out. However, Councilmember Levison had an interesting suggestion that I think's a good idea, that it would read, "Oil and gas well operations are encouraged to refrain from causing airborne emissions and concentrations that could cause negative health impacts to the maximum extent practical." That way, it's just philosophically saying, keep your air clean, but it doesn't really have any legal consequence. Page 31, line six, um, "Again, the applicant shall not engage in activities that the Colorado Division of Wildlife determines threat and endangered species." Um, I just think that, again, looking for four votes, it just caused heartburn. Got rid of it. People either really love or hate their prairie dogs in this town. I think that was it. So, again, those changes were to hopefully make the regs easier to pass. Truth be known, I don't think it makes a big difference either way. Um, I think that the regs, as they were first originally proposed, will stand up in court if we get sued. Personally, I've said, they've told us we're gonna get sued, we should expect it, but then again, if somebody wants to sue the city of Longmont by saying that they insist in drilling in our neighborhoods, I would be shocked if someone actually moved forward with a lawsuit. Um, we also are aware that there is currently a petition being passed as a result of our inaction, and if, and there's a lot of heated discussion and feelings going on in the community. We're still pretty divided over this issue. And I think if we pass the regs with the suggested changes, um, I think it's what's best for Longmont, and I think it would be doing the right thing that might be able to keep us out of court altogether, both with these and with the current, uh, petition that's being circulated. So, those are my thoughts.
I have a question on, on page one. I really did like Shelley Basman's suggestion where she says, "Whereas the city of Longmont has desires to protect," or she wanted to change that to, "Has the legal obligation to protect," or "Has the obligation to protect." Kind of wordsmithing, but, uh, do you think that's fine? Are you okay with that? All right. Councilmember Santos?
I wouldn't. Councilmember Bagley, I think what you have here is, in part, reasonable. I'm still concerned regarding the residential ban. I see the residential ban, and you're trying to avoid a lawsuit? That's the biggest flag of them all. I saw a map recently of, um, what, where we, I guess, are quote-unquote vulnerable. Do we have that map? And do we know who owns those mineral rights? Because I think if, you know, I know part of it is, you can't drill with, in certain density, correct? I'm pretty sure of that. And Councilman Bagley's always said, "I don't want people drilling in my backyard." So, where in this map do you live?
So, what I'm referring to specifically is figuratively speaking, in terms of anyone who lives around here, like, for example, I was up, I thought about moving. My wife and I have been looking for a new home. Right, Sunshine? Yes. We looked at Sundance, we looked at Fox Hills, Fox Meadows, and there are areas out there that would allow, that falls in, fall into these areas. Um, if you actually look, I actually live up in northeastern part of Longmont, and so I'm just saying that, in general, I wouldn't want my property values to decline. And the other thing is that, uh, we don't know what's gonna happen. We have been very fortunate to be working with top operating, and without the state's intervention, we've been able to make some progress on the surface use agreement, but things change. We might have brownfield areas in the future, 10 years from now. We are in a very unique situation to take action as a city council. A, the, even if we get sued, I know that people hate that, but even if we get sued, I know it's not the question you asked, but my, I've got my red light on. You're right, Mayor Protem, it's not the question you asked. But right now, we're in a very unique situation where, in order to sue us, okay, right now, we have cooperation with the local drillers. So, in order to be sued, you need a plaintiff. My understanding is, top operating isn't ready to sue the city, because they don't have any reason to, because we're making progress. So, without a plaintiff, the only way the state can sue us is through a facial lawsuit, a primemfacial case, where they say, on, on the face, there's no way of reading these regulations in a way that will make them harmonious with the state regs. The regs as they were before, in the redline version, they don't, they, they couldn't touch us. And so, right now, the facts of this potential lawsuit are one that are pretty frickin' strong. And so, if we don't take advantage of it, you know, what's gonna happen in 10 years when we've got a new operator coming into the city and, uh, we don't get along with them and see eye to eye, as we do with top operating at the moment on our surface use agreement? Because we've got a lot of people out there, a lot of companies out there, that, uh, yeah, theoretically, we could go out and make surface use agreements with all of them, but we might miss one. And the way that our legal system and our government set up is that if you want to do something with every... is that if you want to do something with everybody, you don't go out and do a surface use agreement one by one. You pass a regulation or a law, and then you put the world on notice that, hey, this is the way we're gonna do business. So going back to your question, I don't want drilling in my backyard. I'm not saying that to make people scared. I'm saying, if I were living in a home that I purchased, and then I were going to have somebody come in 350 feet behind my home, not from my living room, but from my home, I would want, uh, I wouldn't want that to happen. Not because I'm necessarily scared of the environmental impact or consequences. It's just that, as I look out my back porch, and I have a field out there, I, I wouldn't want any industrial activity going on there unless, when I bought my home, I knew that that would be happening. So it's, uh, it's, maybe it's a bit of a rhetorical or symbolic question. But, um, there are areas, I understand about 500 acres in Longmont, and infinite acres in Longmont moving into the future, if you look at what's gonna happen with future development, that could be impacted. Again, not anti-oil and gas, I just think this is a, you know, I, I think the regs are a win-win. You know, I mean, COGA hates my guts, and, uh, I'm a darling of the left, Kate Kissinger. Did you not know that? I'm a darling of the left. And so I, I just think, it's, it's a reasonable compromise. And call me stupid, but I think threading the nee- needle, looking for a win-win, I don't know. I'm just naive enough to believe that that's what we should be doing, looking for a win-win.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Can, Dale, can you answer my question? About, okay, and Eugene Malvador, it's a thou- about a thousand acres, correct?
Right, that, that's accurate.
The vast majority being near the, the airport, over off of 75th.
Uh, Mayor Combs and, and Mayor Protem Santos, the map that we have up here is a similar map to what you've seen before. The areas that are, um, shown in, uh, darker green, those are the areas that are currently zoned residential, that are privately owned, uh, and, um, to the best of our knowledge, are potential for, for drilling. We don't know if those properties are leased or not leased, given that they're privately owned and they're not owned by the city. Um, you know, the, the, the city's golf courses here, uh, Twin Peaks and Eu Creek, those, we have been able to verify that the city does have the mineral rights and they are not subject to being drilled on. Um, same with Sunset. So, uh, out at the airport, there is a large area out there, so you're correct. That's the, the, the area in pink, and that's a business-like industrial area. Um, we've talked extensively about the city-owned property around Union, so you're familiar with that. Um, and then the, uh, some of these other places out in south, southwest Longmont. What we're trying to differentiate on here are the areas that, in your comprehensive plan, are either already annexed and zoned as residential or as planned as residential.
Okay, so?
That, answer your question.
Sorta.
Okay.
By the 2.7?
So if I might interject just a comment. So this map represents this color, kind of the light green color. Those are areas that meet the high-density, uh, requirements of the state. Uh, so they would be subject to the 350-foot setback requirements. Um, and then the, uh, this color, um, represents those areas which would be, uh, are lower-density areas according to the state's rules and subject to the 150-foot minimum, or one and a half times the height of the, uh, the drill rig.
Now, there's really not much outside of the big swath at the airport. The three, the 435, who owns that? Is that, is that the former McStane?
Talking about down here?
Yes.
So, uh, combination of properties, um, there is a large, uh, portion of that is, uh, the West Grange property.
I recall seeing a plan come through, I think through planning and zoning, that this was going to be developed.
It was. It was approved by Plan Zoning Commission in, uh, 2007. Uh, it's been on hold. Uh, McStane sold the property to Williams Investment and Boulder. And they've been holding the property since then, looking for buyers. Um, part of it is, um, part of the Dry Creek Community Park.
Right.
And then part of it is, uh, Renaissance Presidential Subdivision. There's the Brusel, uh, property in this area. And then a large, uh, portion of it also is part of the Somerset Meadows development.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Levison?
Yes, um, well, you know, I, I would be willing to give up on the preamble that the staff drafted with some agreement on other word changes, which, you know, you went through your reasons, Councilmember Bagley, about, um, uh, justifications for things. But, you know, I find some of the, um, some of the, uh, the verbiage is stuff I can't really, um, agree with. Um, starting with, uh, on page five, um, where, I mean, I, I, I think that the, the issue on page five, where it says, um, on line three, um, allow and encourage responsible oil and gas development, um, that's kind of unusual wording for, um, a city regulation. I mean, I think that, um, nothing in here says that we're discouraging anything. Um, that might be a little bit more active, and it may not hold up. I, I'm trying to look at this regulation as being good, not just today, but 10 years from now. Um, if, if, uh, we don't make any changes for the next 10 years. And I'm thinking that we can... So, and encourage, well, you know, if we drop and encourage, I would be okay with just having responsible. So that, that's the first comment. Um, the second comment is, um, you know, I, I think that, um, to, uh, leave in on page six, um, the, uh, line 26, where it says, um, uh, that we have the responsibility, beginning on 25, responsibility to regulate and land use within jurisdiction, including oil and gas drilling, and to provide, you know, for the orderly development. I think that, you know, staff put that in there for a reason. Um, just as, maybe as an entitlement to reinforce that we do have the ability to not just do regular, you know, land use, but in general, our land use jurisdiction covers, um, uh, this industrial, um, particular industry as well. Um, and, uh, I don't necessarily agree with, you know, adding both in line 29, but that's not a deal killer for me. Um, but I do think that, um, line 11 and 12 on page seven, where, um, we, when your suggestion is to add and to address areas of regulation where none has been heretofore established, um, I, you know, by the state or federal governments. I mean, one of the state arguments all along, frankly, has been that a lot of, of even these areas that are gray areas, um, the state COGA has, um, or COGCC has said, all this is preempted anyway. I just think that makes the preemption argument for, um, COGCC pretty strong. So I would, um, maybe just, um, end it. Simpler is better sometimes in some of these, um, phrases, and just to end it where, on line 11, where it says where appropriate. Um, and I would also, you know, frankly, I understand your reasoning around, um, the, the line 19 through 24, where, um, people are not happy about, um, you know, what the, the city, uh, would say. We wanna have some kind of say about what happens, um, where, you know, somebody is drilling and it goes under the city of Longmont. Um, you know, we don't know at what point the, uh, any kind of the casement or the operation, you know, fails. We wouldn't get notice at all. Um, if the other jurisdiction, you know, just never followed up on, um, a regulator who may not be doing their best work, we wouldn't even know that, that there, there would be a problem with this, um, the operation that's incurring under, um, city property. Um, I don't know whether or not there's something else we can do to address that issue. Um, and I understand why it's problematic for you when you did the, um, the wording. Um, and then I'm looking through on, uh, up to, um, line, uh, page 16 of the regulation, line 24. Um, I really don't think it's necessary for us to have that. The city shall not unreasonably withhold its consent. And anybody can say the city is being unreasonable at any time, if we have any reasonable reason to say no to anything. And I, I just think that having that language in there, um, goes a little bit far. I don't, I don't think the city is going to be gunning to be unfair or unreasonable when somebody wants to, um, transfer a permit. I think it's, um, there's regulations from COGCC that basically says, you know, you've gotta approve the, the transfer permit. So, you know, to me, I, I don't really think that that's necessary, that, uh, to be in there. It goes a little bit far. And then, um, on page 17, um, again, I think it's problematic to throw in on line 10 and 11 to add the property rights and/or values, um, of the surface estate. A- again, I think that that begins to pit us in this battle of who's more important, the value of the surface estate or the subsurface resource. Um, you know, I think that, that, that kind of discussion may not be part of the, valid part of the regulations. It's something that we might have as a policy issue. Um, other than that, I like the fact that the indemnification clause is back in. And, um, and thank you for page 30 to, to do the word adjustment there. And then, um, I'm fine with, um, crossing out the line on page 31 around the, um, line six and seven. And I think that's about it. So I, I think in, in consideration, I mean, um, I would, would be willing to negotiate on, um, giving up the, the preamble, um, if we can do a little bit of horse trading on some of these other things.
Councilmember Finlay?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. You know, I really applaud our city staff for writing, uh, these, um, regulations and, and their hard work going into them and going above and beyond, um, what we asked of them. And I also appreciate Councilmember Bagley's, uh, redline version, um, and all the time and effort he's put into this. Uh, it, it does make this a little more palatable to me. But I think the emotion element found its way into these regulations. And I firmly believe that facts and not emotion should rule the day. I think facts should rule our public policy, not the emotional elements of it. Um, fact number one is, the only operator wanting to drill in Longmont is Top right now. And we have and are working on a memorandum of agreement that gives us exactly what we want, to protect, protect our citizens. Um, there are only two other oil and gas leases that we know about in Longmont. Is that correct, Dale? I wanna make sure you're still awake.
Councilmember Finlay, um, we have Noble Energy that has leases out east of the city, Encana and Synergy, so there's three.
Oh, okay.
In addition to Top.
Yeah, could you point those out?
Um, actually, can you pull up that other map? That's what he's trying to do. Right, right. Oh, on the computer? Sorry about that. So...
To use the computer.
So, uh, these properties to the east, this is the, um, the Herner, the French and the Hartman properties are all under Noble Energy. The Petrox property right here is with Encana. Um, Synergy is unfortunately underneath this label, but it's down on Boulder Creek Estates, down, down by the river. And then Top Operating has, uh, the leases like on the Bogut property and, um, this North Adrian property right now, and Sherwood Properties. So they're all in Weld County.
Uh-huh.
Um, I don't know of any leases over in Boulder County on city property that is, uh, under lease.
And the areas where there are, are leases, uh, would it be, would we be able to have in our memorandum of agreement, the 750-foot setback potentially on those?
Councilmember Finlay, what we've been working on is, is that very thing, is to, um, try to derive, uh, operator agreements that will, um, result in a 750-foot setback on the city's properties, uh, out here in Weld. Um, and I think we're real close to having that, yeah.
Okay, so there, other than the answer to that's yes, then?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I, I appreciate that. Um, so here we have, uh, regulations that say we cannot drill in residential areas when in fact, that will, that is the one thing that will probably cause a lawsuit. And we don't need to have that in there if we have these memorandum of agreements that say, uh, that they won't drill within 750 feet of a residential area. And if you look at the areas that can be drilled, it's not likely to occur anyway, anyway. But I understand that you wanna protect things that you, in the future. I understand that there's a fear factor in this. But I think we can accomplish what we need with these regulations by taking that piece out. Um, fact number three is, if we pass these, uh, regulations as they are, we still have some of the issues that the Attorney General, um, mentions in his letter. And I don't think that he makes idle threats, um, as Councilmember Bagley, uh, seems to think. Um, I've not ever seen him make idle threats, so I guess that's the reason I would say that. Um, and for those who wanna scare people into believing that frackers wanna drill everywhere in Longmont, it, i- including our schoolyards, you're just simply mistaken. That's just not gonna happen, and, uh, they can't. They, they have, you have to have the mineral rights. And the people who have the mineral rights aren't gonna let that happen. Um, and the well next to the school that, that we have now, that well was there before the school was there. That was an oversight by someone, um, in the past to build the school there next to a well, not the well folks. The well was there first. I, uh, I can handle the new version a lot better than I can handle the old one, but I still would have to, um, vote against it if we leave the residential ban in there. And, uh, but the other stuff, I'm, I'm good with.
Councilmember Samori?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Well, where do I begin? Councilmember Bagley, I think you did a great job in, uh, making changes to this. And I appreciate all of your time and effort, and also staff's time and effort in, in working on this for so long. I don't have any, uh, issues with it, and I don't have any issues with the residential ban, cause I believe in there, it also states that if it is superseded for whatever reason, we will allow it. My concern, and I share that with Councilmember Bagley, is that long-term, not so much short-term. And I do appreciate Top's willingness to negotiate with us and work with us in good faith and, uh, work with us on the, uh, surface use agreement. And I know that we're trying to approach and talk to the other operators, but I don't know that we have that same level of agreement with them currently, or if we've even progressed as far as we have with, uh, Top Operating. So, and I, you know, I remember hearing that we're not gonna get bullied by COGCC or the public when we make these decisions. We were elected to make responsible decisions on behalf of the community. We own that. COGCC and COGA own their decision if they choose to sue us. We cannot do anything about that. We could not pass regulations and they could still sue us if they wanted to for whatever reason. reason. What we own and what we have to decide is what is best for Longmont and the community and not whether KOGA or COGCC or, uh, the Attorney General is, is going to sue us. We'll cross that bridge if and when we get there. I think we have good regulations. We're bringing them up to meet the, the latest and greatest that the state has already in place. We have recommendations that operators can follow if they want to. If they don't, they can still operate under the state regulations. We're not forcing anybody or denying anybody access to their mineral rights. And I think it would be the state's waste of time and money if they decide to pursue a lawsuit with us. But again, we own the decision for making the best decision for the community regardless of what other people may say or may do. That's what we were elected for and that's what we need to be responsible for.
I, uh, I totally agree with Councilmember Samori. You know, this isn't about right here and now and just with Top. It's, these regulations are for ten years from now with the unforeseen changes. Uh, I think we have an excellent opportunity. Uh, I think, uh, I have to commend Councilmember Bagley for all the hard work he's done. I think, uh, we've got a win-win situation here. I think this is just an excellent opportunity for us to show our leadership and do what the people of Longmont protect, you know, elected us to do and that's to protect them and pass these good regs. And, uh, I'm going to support, um, this version with perhaps some slight modifications, uh, as suggested by Sarah or some negotiated version between those two. But I think conceptually this is, um, a good, a good result and, uh, anyway, Councilmember Bagley.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just one other thought, um, I echo Councilmember Samori's comments. The other thing is there is a philosophical, I mean, as I reach out to some of my fellow council members, uh, uh, there is a philosophical point here that I think that, speaking conservatively, when you sit down and you talk to somebody who sits on perhaps the Planning and Zoning Commission, someone like Joel Champion, and you have a dialogue with them and the question comes up, all right, does Longmont have the ability to decide what we do with our land use? And so by keeping the residential ban in, I call it a residential ban, but really what it is, is just determining what Longmont does with its land use. And if we allow the state to dictate to us that our residential areas in fact are not residential areas, but they're heavy industrial zones, then we are giving up the power to decide how we are going to plan out our city, how we're going to, you know, uh, use our land. And so to me, it's, it, it's not just a matter of, you know, facts or caving in to people who aren't thinking right, fear mongering, et cetera. To me, it's a fundamental philosophy of do we believe that local governments govern best and make decisions locally or are we going to let the state or federal government tell us how to live our life? And so, uh, uh, I don't know if that argument sways any, any feelings, but, um, but, uh, the other thing is that I want to point out that the surface use agreement, the reason why we've made so much progress with Top is not necessarily because Top Operating are just awesome guys. I'm sure you are. But the thing is we had, we had things to horse trade. You know, that won't always be the case. And so, um, it is completely possible for a company to come in, uh, an operator to come in and reach their mineral rights through horizontal drilling. And if I'm wrong, the red line version of the regs say that we can get, we'll give them a variance and they can reach them anyway. So I don't see any downside other than some people claiming you better do this or we're going to sue you. But I just don't see a downside. I just see an upside from passing the regs. And I know that people don't agree with me, but again, those are just my thoughts.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Eugene. We had a conversation yesterday regarding the residential piece of this. We've been told, I mean, haven't we? This is basically a, a loser.
That is Mayor and Council Eugene May City Attorney, that, that is the position of, um, the state and some of the industry representatives. I think, uh, it's clearly an undecided area of law in Colorado.
Again, um, some of the tweaks that Councilmember, thanks Eugene, some of the tweaks that Councilmember Levison, um, mentioned, you know, I really think, again, Brian, Eugene, Kim's not here, Brad Skolton was here, is still here. Good work, Councilmember Bagley. I would agree that you did some really good work here. The residential portion of this still gives me heartburn. Um, I think on page thirty, you just keep that part out. Why would you want to poke a bear with a stick? You know, this is going to come down to a word. A word could shift votes. You know, if everyone has such a heartburn with a preamble, get rid of it. What's the most important thing? The regs. No, it wasn't emotion. I'm just, I'm just talking. Then get rid of it. I mean, that's, you know, I, we heard from Councilmember Witt, you know, um, I was out of town when this, this got brought back up and, you know, it was kind of surprising that this was being brought up. I wasn't here. So I, I had talked to the mayor and, and, uh, city managers, city attorneys, you know what? We went from A to D. B and C totally got left out. I would have hated to have gotten to the, the seventeenth and try to fumble around and try to figure out where all the whereas's are going to go. You know, kind of like tonight, I, I thought I could get, um, regarding one of the, uh, second reading items, I thought potentially a word change would be okay. We get to the seventeenth and we hadn't had this discussion tonight, we'd be all over this thing. And, and, and Lord knows what we would have passed or not passed. You know, the, the heartburn for me is, and Councilmember Samori, I, I, I think we're all aware of the responsibilities that people who voted for us and didn't vote for us. Those responsibilities that they entrusted in us. I think the agreement with that, hopefully the agreement we have with, uh, an Up Top and whoever else, um, is out there and it's my understanding that we have actually reached, potentially have reached out to at least one or two of those other operators. You know, I, I'm of the opinion that you give, there's goodwill. The residential piece is the heartburn. And you and I have talked about it many times and, uh, you know, if it's in there, uh, uh, I'm not, I'm not too sure I could support it because I don't think it's relatively needed. Uh, I think, you know, the map that's being floated around by the group that's doing the petition, I hope they use this map because this is probably the best one except for, except for the fear mongering one that they have. You know, I, I, I'm trying to, you know, that's what we got elected to do is, is to make hard decisions, whether it's a lawsuit or not. Kind of a lawsuit averse due to the fact when I first got on council, that's all that council wanted to do was sue, sue, sue. You know, I, I'm not, again, I'm not trying to poke a bear with a stick and then try to run. Sometimes you have to, but if it's not necessary, then why do it?
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm not trying to poke a bear with a stick and, uh, I'm, don't want a lawsuit coming to the community any more than anyone else here does. But I'm also looking long-term as opposed to short-term. And I'm also considering potentially in the future brownfield redevelopment areas where somebody could amass a lot of property and be able to drill on it. Even though it's within the city and could be, um, potential residential, multi-use, whatever you want to call it. So you talk about goodwill. Where's the goodwill from the state? Not threatening us with a lawsuit just because we want to pass a ban in residential drilling, which they couldn't do anyway because of the density. So why, why would they sue us if they can't do it anyway? What harm does it do to have it in there if it can't, if that right can't be exercised by the operators? How is it restricting them from accessing whatever minerals if they can't do it within residential areas anyway? Why would we be, get sued for it when it's not inhibiting exploration or access to any of that? So where's the goodwill that you're talking about? Where's the good faith on the part of COGCC and KOGA? And again, it is their choice if they want to sue us. It is our choice what we decide and how we decide. And again, we stated clearly, we're not going to get bullied by anybody, not the public, not the state. So if we want to live up to those terms, then let's act on those words.
Councilmember Levison.
Councilmember Samori, I'm, I'm glad that you brought up the, um, the future areas. Um, I was going to ask that question about the areas in White where, um, I believe some of that, that the land that's not annexed into, um, Longmont yet that would be part of the southeast urban renewal area and that area right there. So that's already something that the city has, I guess, beginning in two thousand and six, five and six, had as a potential future growth area. And again, you know, who knows what's going to happen with Boulder County, but I think Councilmember Samori's point about the regulations providing, um, future, uh, protection for, um, an area of the city frankly, that we are looking at for future growth is, um, is, uh, very valid. So, um, again, um, you know, I, I'd like to maybe, uh, Councilmember Bagley and I can horse trade over some of the, you know, finer points of language, but, you know, I would be willing to, um, again, not have the very large preamble if we can come to some terms and get, um, some consensus around, um, some of the, that most of the suggestions, um, Councilmember Bagley has made, I agree with, but there's just a, a couple of things I think we could, um, fine tune and I, and, uh, and frankly, you know, I, I think it does involve our autonomy to have decisions over land use that goes back to why we have a separate city charter, why we're not a statutory city. So if we're not allowed to do, uh, make land use regulations, um, then we might as well not have a separate charter and we may not, and, you know, it would, it would devolve a lot of our other, um, police powers as well.
Okay, I guess we do have a motion on the, uh... I've never seen a second, okay. Councilmember Levison.
Yes, um, I, I would, um, offer a, um, amendment. Well, I guess, could you read the motion back? There is no margin to die for like a second. So, um, uh, well, I, I guess instead of making a motion, maybe, um, what I would, um, like a nod aheads to do is, uh, Councilmember Bagley and I get together and see if we can't, um, come to kind of a, a finite, um, negotiation on, um, the last little bit of, of language considerations and then, um, maybe we can get that proposal out to, uh, everybody.
I think we need to decide that publicly as a public thing. You know, each thing we can, you know, each one of those things we can just go through and say yay or nay. Councilmember Santos.
I would agree with you, Mayor. Having two members of council do this themselves in private, as a former council member said, where's the transparency?
Councilmember Bagley.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coombs. Again, the only, the only reason I did this, I didn't talk to anybody else, it was just feedback, that's it. And so, um, the, uh, and I don't think, and I think that Councilmember Levison and myself, that I think that we're closer than some of the other council members. So, so, I mean, I don't think it's you and I having to negotiate. I think it's, there are other viewpoints and concerns on council that I don't think that this would get resolved unless maybe we do do what Councilmember Finley said, which is go through the changes and talk about it, vote on it point by point, and then, uh, just get to the end and say, look, this is what each of us have said and here's the consensus. We have four votes on this point, four votes on this point, and then the regs end up the way the regs end up. And then we have a vote at the very end and we call it good. So I guess what I'm doing is, uh, seconding your motion if you want to make it again. Want to make it again, Councilmember Finley? Okay, go ahead.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I have a question, Eugene. The, uh, outdoor use deal, where are we on that? Have, have we come up with a list and have we shared it with the state and have they approved any of it?
Mayor and council, I believe you're talking about our designated outside activity areas. Uh, we have met with the state, we have shared a list, we have moved forward with two applications, uh, one for the soccer fields at Sandstone Ranch and one for the Union Reservoir Recreation Area. Uh, those, uh, will be, those are scheduled for hearing before the COGCC on August sixteenth, plus or minus a day, thirteenth. And...
So, um, Brian Schumacher, okay, we developed, so the, uh, the applications were submitted, um, in, um, like the third week of June. And, uh, they were scheduled just for introduction, um, at this past Monday's meeting, um, at the state. So Kim Sugar and I went down to the COGCC commission meeting, um, and Kim gave a brief overview of the proposed applications. Um, the commission acknowledged to the applications. They didn't have any specific questions for us at that time. They look forward to, uh, hearing the, uh, presentation that they're hearing, uh, in August.
Okay, so the LGD process is working the way that it should or...
Yeah, I believe so. We've had, uh, you know, we had a meeting, uh, a few weeks back with, um, Mike King, who's the executive director from Department of Natural Resources, as well as Jimmy Brandon, one of the assistant directors, and Tom Kerr, the acting director for the COGCC. They came up and we talked about the state permitting process and the LGD process and any efforts that we're going through, uh, to work with Top in terms of working on the, um, surface use operators agreement. So I think that's, I think that's been working well.
And so is staff looking for us to make a motion tonight or are you just looking for direction as to whether to bring A, B, or C back?
Mayor and council, so one option which, which would make, I think, staff's life easier is if we could get specific direction as to the language we would prepare...
we would prepare a substitute ordinance and have a packet supplement later this week so that the public can see exactly what the direction of council was.
Councilmember Finley.
I would remake my motion that we bring back the redline version of Mr. Bagley's. And when our full contingent is here next week, we go through it section by section.
So you don't want to do that tonight, section by section, so that they? Councilmembers Levison.
I just think that next week, do we have a lot of other, I mean, we're going to have a lot of other stuff on the agenda next week, too. So I'm thinking that in fairness, for people to make comment, it might be better to go ahead and at least get what would be our best stab at a final, at a final version and consider. Because next week then, we can also have Councilmember Witt's input. She can write a memo, just like Councilmember Bagley wrote a memo of opinion, about what is going to be basically much easier to read once we get, if we could get this work done tonight. To me, I think, you know, we've done enough of the brain damage. We might as well just go through one by one.
Well, it's been moved and seconded. Can you read back the motion again?
Councilmember Finley moved to bring back the redline version as proposed by Councilmember Bagley and go through it section by section at next meeting. Seconded by Bagley.
Councilmember Levison.
Would that include the changes that Councilmember Bagley already went through tonight?
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Nobody died and made me boss. But the only thing I can think of was I made a verbal change. I guess, I guess, I guess the answer is, I mean, I guess I'd propose no. Only because, you know, you start from something, whether it's my version, the old version, Councilmember Witt's version. We just start somewhere and then go through change by change. And we can then address it at the next meeting, whether we put it in now or next time. People will have heartburn, or they will not. And so I guess the motion that I seconded was just the redline version that I proposed tonight. Just use that as a starting point. And politically speaking, yeah, let's do it tonight. No Councilmember Witt. I think I know how she's going to vote on certain things. Let's sneak it in. But then again, we're not big politics. We're a village council. And we got to work together and figure out what's good for Longmont, best for Longmont. And I think waiting till next week and going through the redline version, you know, I'm not looking forward to that meeting. But I think it would be the best result. One more, you promised, Councilmember Finley, just one more? Okay, I can live with that.
Okay, I guess we'll vote. It passes five to one with Councilmember Santos descending and Councilmember Witt absent. Yeah, that was tough. Final call, public invited to be heard. Is there anybody who'd like to? Can we maybe like take a two-minute break? I just got to take a quick, quick break.
Okay.